This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Great. All right. Calling to order the Select Board meeting for May 3 at 6:01 PM. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right. So tonight, we have about a half an hour or so of regular business before we have the Finance Committee join us. We'll have a joint meeting at that point to talk about budget items in particular. We don't have anybody here for open time for the public and no presentations. So let's just jump right into appointments and resignations. We have, I think, one resignation and one appointment.
Motion to accept the resignation of Florence Collins, effective June 30, 2022.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. And just for any discussion, I believe Florence is resigning, right, after over, what, 10, 10 years at least?
Retiring.
Retiring.
She's retiring.
Retiring and resigning, resigning and retiring. Yes, retiring after some 10 years. So thanks Flo for all your service to the Council on Aging in particular and the town of Southampton. And we appreciate all that you've done in your volunteer role. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second one is a, an appointment request for the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee. Francine, would you like to take that one?
Taylor Seebolt. He's a professor at the University of— Oh, Tyler Seebolt, professor at the University of Pittsburgh, has agreed to serve on the Bylaw Committee. Certainly with his advanced degree, he understands the need for research, documentation, verification, and accuracy, which are essential to the Bylaw Committee. So we welcome him with open arms. We may even have a little housewarming for that day. It's been a long time that we've, you know, to, to, we've gone from three members for like the last two and a half years to, to four. So we're very pleased that he has agreed to serve.
Okay. So would you like to make the motion formally?
I'd like to motion. I would like to motion that we accept the Taylor Seebolt's application to join the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Again, it's just another relatively new person in town. So very, very thankful, very welcome to join in and be part of what's going on here in town. So—
And that term rolls to June 30, 2024?
I believe it does. Yes. This one is a, goes until then. Right. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Very good. Okay. Now, we have a bunch of personnel change forms. And some of these have been signed already by PQB as well. So I'll let John take the lead on these, if you would. John?
Yeah, the first part of a list is the ones that have been active by PQB and—
First three, uh, first five, maybe?
First four, I, one, two, four, I thought. And then the ones with the asterisk have not been.
Okay. Yeah.
I could be wrong.
First four are okay with—go ahead. I think you can follow them. Yep.
So the first one is a PRF for Highway Department, laborer, full-time, benefited. And this is to approve the posting or fill in the position. And it's been signed off by Accounting, PPPB, and Finance. And it's to fill in existing position that's there that was caused by the resignation of Kevin Slattery.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'll move to approve. Or do you want to go through them all?
No, let's take these, these two together. We've got a resignation, first of all, right?
Yeah, and we can also take a PCF resignation of Kevin Slattery, which is called a PRF. Full-time benefited, effective April 28, 2022. And I believe that Mr. Slattery is taking a job in the—never mind.
Yeah.
Let's probably have a second.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So we have a vacancy of a laborer at the Highway Department. Kevin Slattery is resigning. And then this piece, PRF, is to be able to post the position. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And this is a full-time laborer benefited?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Any, I think we have a motion. Do we have a second? We'll take both of these together if we can. Do we have a second on this?
Sure.
Who's who made the motion?
I don't know.
Um, Francine.
I did.
Francine did, sort of, I think.
I'll second that then.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have a PCF for Emily Monkska, librarian, circulation desk, part-time, non-benefited. Change in hours, increase to hours, but still staying under the 20 hours per week. And it's within the, within the, this is effective July 1st. And the calculations are being accounted for within the existing budget that the library has afforded. And I'll make a motion to approve that.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that one? All right. So this is a change in hours from nine to, this is, this is the one that takes, takes effect actually in FY '23, right?
Correct, July 1st.
Yeah. Right. So just changing the number of hours from nine to 15 on this one.
Correct.
All right. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the next one and everyone that comes after that came in after PPP's last meeting. And PPPB is not slated to meet again until after the election. So per the regulations, Select Board may actively absent so the PPP, which is why it's up in point of work tonight. So I'm going to—
Can I just ask, the next one, it doesn't have an asterisk, but that's, should be considered one of the other ones?
We, we did not take up the police chief's—
Okay, so we—
And I can confirm that because it's not signed.
Okay. Okay. So are we, are we doing the police chief one?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the PCF for Ian Illinsworth, Police Chief, change in contractual salaries. Has been approved by the department head, the town accountant. And he comments our new successor contract, annual salary $111,936.68, effective May 5, 2022. For a period of three years. And the contract was previously approved before.
Correct. Okay. All right. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next one is a emergency two-week appointment, PCF, for one Patrick Day. Part-time, non-benefited, transfer station attendant. This is the, I think there's another resignation on here. If not, the, the existing second person at the transfer station has resigned to take the position in the private sector.
I think that's a part of what Kevin used to do, right?
Yeah. So Kevin, yes. So this is to get somebody in there on an emergency basis to assist the existing employee that's there. Two-week period. And the PCF contains both the department head and the town accountant's signatures. And the wage is $14.25 minimum wage, as needed, up to 19 hours per week on call, attendant, substitute attendant for the transfer station.
Okay. So this is just a two-week emergency one?
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
Could we have the motion then?
I'll move to approve the emergency PCF for Patrick Day.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next is the PCF for a permanent, part-time, non-benefited, transfer station attendant. Same person that just received the emergency two-week appointment. Wage is $14.25 per hour, as needed, up to 19 hours per week on call, substitute. Again, signed off by the department head and the town accountant, as to availability of funds.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right. Could we have a second?
I'll second.
I just have one question, just in terms of the effective dates on both of these. They both have the same, for April 30th. And if one is a two-weeker, an emergency two-week one, I would guess that one of these might need to be altered? I'm not sure. Or not?
I would, I would have been the permanent one to be as of today's date that it's voted May 3rd.
Okay.
The April 30th would allow him to place him during this period of, which is already—
Right. Okay. All right. So with that change of the permanent one to be put at May 3 rather than April 30th. All right. Any further discussion on this one? If not, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a PCF, Paula Duberry, treasure collector, temporary, admin, treasure collector clerk, 30 hours per week. This is to replace Tracy. Wage is $17.29 per hour, 30 hours a week, benefit eligible, temporary, not to exceed 12 weeks.
Okay.
And it's signed off by both the department head and town accountant.
I'll move to approve to get to a discussion. Okay.
Yeah, discussion on this one?
Why is it temporary?
I believe traditionally, they do temporary to allow the department a 12-week evaluation process.
Okay, so that's—
And then convert it to a permanent.
And she understood, okay. And she understands that going in?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
But I believe that's the past practice.
Okay.
Ed, can you speak to that? I didn't realize that that is past practice.
It has been in that department.
In that department? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that consistent with the personnel policies, that there's a probationary, someone comes in as a temporary employee?
It's a choice.
Okay.
Yeah. But it is acceptable.
And when do benefits kick in? When they become permanent?
Yes.
Medical benefits?
Yeah. Other than health insurance, which actually kicks in immediately.
Immediately.
But vacation time and carryover and things of that nature are permanent status.
So it's not retroactive to her actual temporary start date?
Correct.
It reverts to, the calculation starts when she becomes permanent?
Correct.
Okay.
But in other scenarios where we have new hires that are not necessarily designated as temporary, they still have a probationary period?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Okay. So understanding that this person would be eligible for health benefits immediately, but none of the other vacation benefits, et cetera, until the position is permanently filled. Okay. So we have a temporary position for 12 weeks, not to exceed 12 weeks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is for a PCF, Matthew Maywell, police department, part-time, non-benefited, police officer. 19 and a half hours per week, salary of, or hourly rate of $18.50. Non-benefited eligible. Signed off by both department head and town accountant.
Okay. Could we have a motion for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a PCF for Brandon Lampfier, Fire Department, as needed firefighter slash EMT basic. Hourly rate of $19.04, signed off by both department head and town accountant.
Okay. It's part-time, part-time, non-benefited. Okay.
As needed.
Right. As needed. Okay. Have a motion?
Make that motion.
Mm-hmm. Have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a PCF for Patrick Day, Fire Department, probationary firefighter, hourly rate of $14.25. Part-time, non-benefited, as needed, signed off by both department head and town accountant.
Okay.
Will only be paid when called in for fire.
For fire. Okay. Okay. All right. We have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Got a second, my Francine. Okay. Any discussion? If not, let's go ahead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
PCF for Gideon—
Tuchet.
Tuchet, of Southampton, Fire Department, as needed, EMT basic level. Hourly rate $16.92, signed off by both department head and town accountant. Will not be, will not add to the budget, will not work unless shift is available.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion's made. Second?
I'll second.
Francine, second? Yes? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, PCF, or I'll make a motion for a PCF for Maya Levine of Granby, Fire Department. EMS, as needed, position level of EMT basic, salary of $16.92 per hour. Will only be compensated when filling the shift. Signed off by department head and town accountant.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we did—
I believe that—
I think that's it.
That's all.
That's it. We did Emily. Yes. Okay. We did all of us. Okay. Good. Well, took care of a lot of PCFs. So thanks for those. Get those out of the way. All right. We're not going to do any reports tonight, Town Administrator or Select Board reports or Grant Committee reports. We can jump in maybe a little bit to some new business. And Ed, can we start with something that may not need FinCom's presence? If that's true?
Absolutely.
I'll sign these at the end so I don't lose them.
And I will call your attention to the fact that our town clerk did send along the election warrant, which needs to be posted by next Tuesday. So if you also do that, that would be very helpful.
Okay. Well, let's take that one—was that on the, on the agenda itself or is that just an addition to the agenda?
That's, would be under any other necessary business that cannot await the next regular May 10 Select Board meeting.
Let's pick that one up. So this is the warrant for the annual town election, which is still May 17. And it basically lists all the positions that are on the ballot. And also, there is a question on the ballot about, shall the town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new 35,000-pound GBW wheel loader for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental or related there too? And it's a yes or no answer on the ballot. The polls are going to open at noon on the 17th and stay open until 8 o'clock. And that's basically our warrant. So could we have a motion to approve the warrant for the annual town election?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Yeah.
Aye. Is it okay that the warrant itself is, on the first page says May 17th, but on the second page says that the salary will sign May 3rd?
It's—
It's on the header.
Yeah.
Second line on the first page says that—
No, the next page. First third page.
We have to sign the warrant ahead of time, right?
Right. May 17th is the actual election.
Right.
Okay.
So that the constable can post it and get it officialized. Is that correct, I think?
Okay.
So I think we're good. So I think we have, did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. So that's under the any other business that cannot wait. That is taken care of. I'm going to keep all these up in one spot to sign them later. Help.
And then, uh, two other items that the Select Board may do that does not require action by the Finance Committee is, in your package, there is a letter of support and a letter of commitment, which would come from the Select Board for the Municipal Vulnerability Plan Action Grant Application that we are intending to put in on Thursday.
And so this, um, this basically requires a commitment to match 25% of the total project cost through either cash or in-kind labor. And so one of these letters is to show our commitment. And the other letter, I believe, is to just have a letter of support that goes in the application process from the town Select Board. And I believe ConCom and, was it Planning or—
So far, we have one from Planning, one from the Police Department, one from our Fire EMS. ConCom did vote to draft one and send that to me tomorrow for inclusion in that package.
Okay. Good. So these are just typical letters of support to go along with the application. And they gave us a lot of language to fill in the blanks hereon. So I'm assuming, Ed, you've, you've copied that boilerplate language pretty well. So we have two letters essentially to be signed, right? One is a support letter and one is the commitment of the 25%.
Correct.
All right. Do we want to have a little discussion in terms of the 25% where we're thinking about that coming from?
Yes. And the amount.
Yeah. And we will only have to identify that if we are awarded the grant. But I'm thinking of basically two portions. And one portion would be in-kind contribution by the volunteers, which by our calculations may end up being about $5,000 or so. And then possibility for the remainder of the match, which in total needs to be $25,000, depending on what we have available at the time if awarded the grant. But one of those possibilities would be ARPA funding.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we don't need to put up the, the money actually now, but we're just committing the fact that if we get the grant, we would, we would have the 25%. We will put aside the 25%.
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to use some of the additional funds that were just allocated to the DPW or the Highway Department from the state?
That might be an interesting idea.
No, that would not—
Wouldn't qualify?
This does not qualify for the RAP grant, what you're speaking of.
Okay.
Okay. But we did find out that ARPA could cover this, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. Right. If we, if we needed it to.
If we needed to.
If we needed to. Yeah. Okay. All right. Any questions about that? So again, this was going to be the, the study that—
I do have one question.
Yeah?
When will we find out about the award?
The award won't be until, I'm thinking like August, probably.
Oh, okay.
Something like that. Because this is, um, this is one that Ty and Bond is working on. And it's going to be the, the culvert assessment. I think I'd mentioned it at the last meeting. So it's going to be a town-wide study of where our culverts are and the shape that they're in. And then recommendations in terms of what we can do about that. So—
Do, do people feel like we should earmark where the money's coming from? I mean, if we get, or wait until we see if we get the award. It just seems like $25,000. We should somehow have, have some support for it coming from somewhere.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Any thoughts from anybody? We have, like Ed said, we can probably pull it together in terms of both volunteer wages as well as time of, say, Randall's time, Ed's time for meetings and all those kinds of things, figuring the hourly and fringe benefit rates and probably put together, along with Bradley's time to account for the grant, probably put together around $5,000 worth of in-kind value. But it's harder to get a little bit more than that, probably. So I'd, I'd say that we probably need $20,000 put aside somehow, whether it's ARPA or if we decide we had any free cash left. But we'll probably aim toward ARPA, I have a feeling. So—
Okay.
If that's, we'll just keep that on our list of, of, when we do our ARPA meeting and really look at those proposals. We'll cap that as a sort of parentheses, I think, that we need to keep $20,000 aside just in case, unless we find it somewhere else. But I think the, the logical place would be to, to go to ARPA at this point.
Okay.
Maybe. So, so could I have, uh—
Make a motion to approve both of them and authorize the chairless by point of sight on our behalf.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right. So that will go in with the application on Thursday. Get that one moving. Uh, what else can we do? We've got one here. Okay.
Do we want to kill the minutes?
Just executive.
Those are executive.
What about the septic betterment? Is that along?
Uh, is, is somebody coming in from BOA or no?
Uh, I know the Health Director was not available.
Okay. So why don't we, yeah, why don't we take a look at the septic betterment one? That was one of the ones that was put out as a, as a request to put on the warrant for the town meeting. And just to, just a note, we have an overview of the septic betterment program. I'll just recap it so that people listening will have some knowledge of it, too. Town of Southampton, through the Board of Health, has administered this program since 1999. It's part of a Department of Environmental Protection Program, now known as being administered through the Clean Water Trust. Payments may be made by resident borrowers, sorry, payments made by resident borrowers may be amortized for up to 10 years. Payments are made on the third and quarter, third and fourth quarter of the residence tax bill. Interest on the loans is retained by the town in a dedicated account to be used by the Board of Health. Interest money can be used for expenses related to the program. The Board has authorized loans at a 5% interest in keeping with the majority of towns in the Commonwealth. And this program is available to all cities and towns in the Commonwealth. Normally, this has got to be approved at town meeting. And then if that passes at town meeting, the Board of Health is authorized to apply for and borrow $200,000 at 0% interest. And there's no cost to the town for this program. The Board of Health draws down the monies in $50,000 increments to be loaned to residents for the repair of failed septic systems at their primary home. It's not for commercial properties. And the system must be failed and the system must be at a primary residence. Application process and a loan document that goes along with this that has to be approved by, or I guess they have already, the, the, the actual paperwork has already been approved by Town Council since this has been an ongoing program. The betterment is filed in the registry and a lien is placed on the property at the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds by the Board of Health and released when the loan has been paid in its entirety. Basically, the program, according to the Board of Health, has been successful for over 20 years. The Health Department has loaned almost $600,000 for septic repairs. And many residents have taken advantage of the program. And we currently have 10 active betterments. So that's what we are knowing about this. And I guess one thing that wasn't clear to me, how often do we have to renew this program? Is this a yearly, two-yearly, five-yearly thing that we have to renew this program?
It's taken in $50,000, shall we say, modules. And it just depends on how long those last and how active the town is with it. My memory, and I can't tell you if it was three years ago or, or longer, is that actually we had another module of $50,000 left. But we, the town had not had any activity of new loans for a period of time. So actually, they took that back. So—
So they can, the Board of Health can borrow up to $200,000, but only take $50,000 at a time, is what I'm understanding?
Right. Well, yeah, what's authorized is $50,000. So once that $50,000 is used up—
Then they can go back.
Another $50,000 would have to be authorized, up to a total of $200,000.
And it's, and it's clear that they, we get the, we borrow the money at 0% interest, but we charge the borrower 5%, which is retained by the Board of Health for their use.
Right. In the way this is explained, yeah. John, question?
I would agree the way it's explained there.
Yeah.
But also, when this program was funded in 1999, the town received an initial, one time payment of $100,000. Now, that $100,000 was supposed to be loaned out and paid back to the town. So there should be an accounting of that $100,000 revolving through here. Then this other program came up with the money or the second wave came through. So one of my questions is, where's that original $100,000? Is that still being dealt amongst those 10 active betterments? Okay, that's fine. The intent of, my reading of the act is that 5% interest has come back in to go back— The intent of, my reading of the act is that 5% interest has come back in to go back into that fund to be used again to loan out again in additional work.
Right.
Now, I didn't, I didn't see this in time to actually go check the MGL to see if the wording that is specified in here that says that the Board of Health can then take that money and spend it as it sees fit.
That's what it says.
If that's what the MGL says, then I have no argument, but I haven't done that fact check yet.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess hanging questions that I have is, does anybody have the accounting of the original $100,000 in 1999? And then, because if we're trying to, of the 10 active betterments, what are they?
Yeah. Do we still see this as a line on our sheets?
Because I do see value in it. I just want to know where that first batch money is. And if because time has gone by and that process was lost and the money got paid off, then it's not there anymore.
Well, there must be something happening if we've got 10 active ones, right? And we've loaned up to almost $600,000 over the last 20 years, so that original 100 has somehow multiplied.
Well, I see value because I mean.
Additional borrowing.
Three rounds of $200,000 that were borrowed through that program.
Oh, 300, three rounds, okay.
So that'd be two quarters.
Yeah, okay, there it is right there.
Still leaving that initial 100 on account.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It does have value. We have, I mean, we only use $50,000 in oil because there's fewer septic systems over there.
Right.
And given everything that's going on right now, we're in the town's area with system failures, I see value in this.
Right.
I would just like to know where.
Okay.
Is this 200,000 in addition to our 100, so we're really authorizing up to 300,000? That's our capability or not? I guess it's a hanging question I have.
Okay. Do we have a sense of that at all from what you've seen on the accounts, no?
I was not here in 1999. As were none of you, so.
That I do know. But I just thought, you know, maybe the line had crossed your desk somewhere along the way in your budget reviews here. Okay, so at this point in time?
There is a line item in the expense report.
I was thinking I'd seen something in the expense report at some point in time, yeah. Okay.
I, depending on how everybody else feels, I mean, I have no objection moving forward with this provided, just that what happens with that interest, that language matches whatever the MGL says.
Right.
Right.
And if it says they can go back to the department to be expended as they see fit, so be it, but I think it's more restrictive.
But it needs to be recorded and tracked.
Yeah, it sounds like, and it sounds like they are doing it with rich deeds.
The loans, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So are we able to theoretically go ahead with the idea that we would put this on the warrant for the town meeting with a few pieces of clarity coming to us before we finalize the warrant, which has got to happen anyway?
I would agree to that.
Yeah, okay. Any thoughts? Yeah? All right. So let's have a more formal motion to whatever language I just tried to say. Okay.
I'll move to approve this subject, just clarification of the language on what happens with the interest.
Mm-hmm.
Period. And then if any information on the original $100,000 could be shared with us, that would be grateful.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
I just mentioned that along with that same email, there was a couple of other handouts about the mosquito program. And I just wanted to note that, I'm just sending an email, I know you have, there's a meeting on Thursday with the Board of Health, Francine, and I'm just sending an email because I just have some questions. And if you remember last year at this annual town meeting, there were a lot of questions and there wasn't anybody to address. So I would just strongly request that, that somebody be available to answer any questions about it. And what deliverables do voters get on the $5,000 we've been spending?
Okay.
And also in the bottom of the handout, it says something about the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District is assembling staff and that. I mean, we've been paying into this program for at least three years and so I don't think that handout is new or current.
Okay.
All right. They're having a meeting on Monday and I'll attend.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll raise these two questions.
Okay. I'm sending you a copy of the questions I had.
Okay.
Now, this wasn't a separate warrant article, right? This is one of the things that's already in the budget, is it not?
Right, it's in the budget.
It's moved to ARPA though. I think that's the latest, would be that that and the Sharps program is being moved out of the operating.
Possibility.
Oh, okay, it hasn't been decided.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be a separate article, warrant article. It was more for our information in the package.
It's sent like about a couple different handouts about it.
Yeah, it was more for our information. Okay. All right. I think we've done that, that, that. Okay, I think we are here. And thanks Finance Committee. Would you like to just call yourselves to order?
At 6:35, we will call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Great, good. Okay, so we are kind of in the new business section here. And I think our first agenda item before we really get into the budget and the wage scale adjustment is to hear from our Fire Chief EMS Director about some of his budgetary requests. So, John?
Hi, folks. Fire Chief, Belanger Road. So are there specific questions?
I think it was related to the email that we got, what, week, two weeks ago, maybe?
Yep.
In terms of, one of them was about permanent staff, I think, for one.
Yes.
The notion of that and then figuring out where benefits might come from if that was going to be a situation. And what was the other issue, guys?
The other issue would be the Fire Chief's request to increase the dollar amount of the warrant article for transfer into his funds for EMS purposes for fiscal year '22 from $4,000 to $10,000.
There was no explanation.
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay, happy to explain. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was that the burn permit then?
No, 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 that's EMS expenses. So my EMS expenses have been pretty high this year. Just, I mean, they've been the same for 10 years since I've been here. Two things happened. One, there was a delay in a $4,000 ambulance software, which I usually get the bill in February. I actually had to chase it. I couldn't find it. It turns out they had some problems with just their billing department. So I knew I was cutting it close with the ambulance expense and is why I went for the $4,000 increase. That bill was 4,000 and change. There was also another bill that came to me which was, it was, it gets paid every five years and that's another $4,000 and I didn't have it on my radar, honestly. So the, and that's for emergency notification. So they, basically we get a text and it also, you click on it, it'll show you directions, those kinds of things. And we also use it for communicating because I can break into groups when you're looking for people. You can hit EMTs or paramedics or whatever that happens to be. So when that bill came through and I knew I was already pushing with the 4,000 that I'd asked for additionally, I knew my account was going to be blown up. And so I thought 10,000 would probably be appropriate. It gives a little bit of a cushion. If the money is available, I know that you had some other earmarks for some of that money, so I'm not sure, you know, what's available where. But those bills need to pay and that was why I was expanding that.
And both of those were in the warrant, the vendor warrant that I signed tonight?
Yes, yes.
So that?
Money's been committed.
That five-year bill is?
Yeah, but it's, but.
Five-year bill is there and the?
Yeah, but they're, I'm spending over my limits in the accounts is the problem, so.
And the five-year bill was 4,000 as well?
Yes, yeah, I mean, shooting from the hip on that, but approximately. Yeah.
It's like 45.
Yeah, yeah, costs are going up. I mean, medical supplies are going up. It's just, you know, it's a challenge. Like I say, it's been a level-funded line item for literally 10 years. And, you know, I'd been looking for a $4,000 increase for, I don't know, the last three or four years and just barely squeaking by with it. And this year it didn't make it. I'm even going over the 4,000 that I requested. So I don't know where, you know, finances stand. I certainly would encourage an increase to that budget just because it gets spent and I hate to do this every year where I come in front of you and say my budget is light for EMS expenses.
And this would still be a transfer from ambulance expenses?
From ambulance receipts.
Receipts, rather, I'm sorry. Receipts. Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions on that?
Finance, have any questions?
Heard that part. I think it was the other part we were.
Yep.
Not having enough information on to understand it.
Sure.
But if you guys have got questions over there, please, I don't want to ask anything that I shouldn't be asking.
I don't at the moment, no.
You guys have heard more of the details on the Fire Department budget than we have probably, so.
And if anybody has questions later, certainly write and ask and I'd be more than happy to.
So this 4,000 would come out of ambulance receipts?
The addition, yeah, so the 4,000 was looking to come out of ambulance receipts and I'm looking to up that to 10,000.
You need 4,000 for this year and next year you want it to be a 10,000 budget?
No, 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 no. I need 4,000 for this year and I am trying to get an additional 4,000 for next year because that's a pretty, I'm hitting that limit every year. But this year, because I got that, that $4,000 bill for the emergency response data, I need to get more this year. So I'm looking to, when I, for the town meeting, I'm looking to not only ask for the 4,000, which I really need to be in my budget, but isn't currently, but I need to get the additional to cover.
So amongst all your other line items, you don't have $4,000 to solve?
Could I, could I dance? I mean, it's a dance to the end of the year. Every, every year, if you look back through my budget, I mean, they can look, I mean, my expense accounts are spent every year.
Okay, so let's see if there isn't.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's 4,000 for this year, 6,000 for next year, because you already have, you traditionally would get four. So the additional adds to get to 10, right?
That, I could probably get by, and I'm sorry to make this convoluted, I could probably get by with an additional four going forward. This year, I'm going to be four short because it's not my budget.
Yep.
Plus the additional. So I'm asking for 10 to cover this year and then four in years moving forward because it's only once every five years.
Collectively, between two years for this line item, what are you looking for?
For this line item, for this year, I need $10,000.
For this year?
For this year.
And then next year?
I'd like a $4,000 increase because that's pretty.
So 14.
Okay.
10 for this year.
Yep.
To come out of ambulance receipts.
Yep.
An additional four.
For next year.
For next year, so that's 14 there.
Okay, so are you taking that 14 out of ambulance receipts?
Just let me ask you. So let's just stick with the 10 then.
Okay.
The 10,000 out of ambulance receipts.
Yep.
You've got a debt payment coming due.
Yep.
Down the road.
Yep.
Of 68,000. And traditionally, 100,000 comes out for your wages. Well, you really, 40,000 goes into your EMS stuff and 60,000 goes in your wages. So historically, there's been about 168 as long as you have the ambulance service over the past four years.
Okay, I mean.
So if, just let me finish. So you take that 168 rounded to whatever it is, but 168 plus the 10,000, that's 178. I don't think there's 178 available in that line item in ambulance receipts.
Yeah, I mean, ambulance receipts, I mean, usually I have a budget that I work with and then ambulance receipts at the end of the year. I mean, I occasionally go to it, like I went to it for the additional wage increase that I needed to get. And right now I'm going to it for another 10,000. Historically, I don't usually get money and it usually gets transferred over into general fund.
Historically, it's not $100,000, give or take, in the revenue section of the budget.
It's nothing that I initiate. So whatever gets initiated for that transfer in years past, it's usually been something that accounting has initiated to balance the general budget.
So it may come from other departments? Or is it comes?
Well, it.
No, it comes from ambulance receipts to cover.
Ambulance costs.
Ambulance costs, correct.
And if they're.
And for the past few years, there's been a number in the revenue section.
Usually been $100,000, correct.
Not counting the debt.
Not counting the debt.
Right.
See, and that's where accounting is going to be able to answer better than I because I don't always, because I don't actually initiate those transfers generally, that's something that accounting has always done, so.
So right now, there is $100,000 in the proposed budget.
Okay.
To go to EMS wages.
Okay.
You have the debt service of 68, which is part of that 100 right now. So later on, I think there's going to be a discussion about that debt service, but the 100 plus the 68 will balance the budget.
Okay.
With taking an extra 10. And then that assumes that there's 178 available today in the receipts.
Yeah, I don't know what's available. I actually don't have that off the top of my head. But that's a different way of doing it than you've done in the past. In the past, it was just a line item. I wasn't, you know, I didn't take anything from ambulance receipts directly into my budget. My budget was always set. And then it was accounting and town administrator that would transfer whatever part of ambulance receipts they felt appropriate between debt service and what they felt appropriate to move into general fund.
It has to go to town meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It has to go to town, it has to be a town meeting vote. We can't.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And in the past, Vicki's always, that's.
But I think what you're saying, John, or Chief, is that you have been involved in the discussions about what the revenue piece is.
And what gets transferred over.
Which ultimately, by voting the budget, authorizes that transfer.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, I mean, I have run my own business in the past and so that's why, I mean, I know that revenue is important to the functionality of my department and the town. So I keep an eye on what comes in for revenue and usually we're about $200,000 as we, and I'm hoping as we get better coverage, we'll be even better than that.
So from what I'm understanding though, that we just signed off on a warrant tonight for around, close to $9,000, right? Between the two, 1,400 and 1,4500, thereabouts for this five-year payment?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Eighty-eight or something.
We've already put it on.
Which has created a deficit.
Right. So this is giving us already a bill that we've signed off on to pay for about 9,500 thereabouts. For now, now, yeah.
So how, I think Ed knows what question I could, maybe not. How does a account that's in deficit make it that far to be paid? My understanding, one of the functions of some of the positions is to stop that process along the way.[1563.75]
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I do get it's a prior year bill and all that stuff, but.
Yeah, the transfer should be.
It can be. I mean, obviously, it has been incurred. It should be paid somehow, some way. You know, whether it's through this process or another, that's up to the select board. But you're correct, and should not pay into deficit on any account.
Right.
Yeah. As of, as of today, because Bradley and I worked on it today for the adjustments for fiscal year '22, the balance in that account would be 153,514 and 84 cents.
That's ambulance receipts?
Correct.
And just a point of note, I mean, I've never overspent my budget. My budget always comes in, you know, from when I take my budget in total. I've never overspent my budget, ever. I've always gone to what's been allotted. So it's only through, like, like you say, the pay increases and what I'm asking for now, because I foresaw that it was going to be overspent. So this is the first time that I've ever seen that overspend had to come back and ask for additional funding. So it's not a typical way to do business.
And so for the FY '23 budget, following up on John's question, if that was going to be normally 4,000.
Additional.
Yeah.
Additional to what's being, what's already in the budget. I mean, what you're asking for.
Then that should.
Whatever's in that budget line.
Yeah.
We're talking about tonight, you want an extra 4,000 for the FY '23.
Yeah, just, just for cost of, cost of inflation increases. Because I, otherwise, my guess is I would be back here next year doing the same thing. I mean, I've made that budget work at that line item for 10 years. And cost of everything right now is up. So.
And the total I see for the two items is 7,500.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's about.
Okay.
Is it possible that we can wait until, we have till July 15th, right, to do the final transfers for the end of the year? If we don't take it out of ambulance receipts right now and wait and see how the end of the year is, maybe we can transfer it from one of the.
You could.
Wage lines or something like that within his department at the end of the year to balance without affecting what we were maybe going to try to use for next year's budget by taking it out of receipts and then waiting for free cash to get certified again because it's already in there.
So break his request into two parts. Break his request into two parts. The one to deal with the current deficit that's been created. Wait till July 15th.
Right, wait till the end of the year and see, because chances are, there's going to be money left in some of the other, the wage lines are in some other account that he has. So within his department, we can just move that money around at the end of the year so there isn't a deficit.
And then the second part would be doing just next year's budget.
Or wait until the town meeting, you know, partway into the year or whatever.
And, and, and that's what I've done generally, is I've shifted any monies around as need be at the very end of the year. And there is the possibility, I mean, I, my, my projections for wages are showing that I will have some money in wages, that we could do that. The only problem is if I'm over it all, then we, we need a town meeting vote to transfer from that receipts, right?
But why are you projecting a surplus in wages? Is it, it's got to be for one of two reasons.
Yep.
So what's the reason?
Well, the reason is because 100, we're not at 100% capacity all the time. So whether, if, if I have a basic and not the medic on, then there's a cost savings for my budget, although I pay more for someone else, for another town to come in. And 45 per diem people is a challenge to manage and to try and through holidays and everything else to get 100% coverage. Since we had, the town had voted to put in the additional pay to bring it up to a reasonable pay for medics, I've actually, the, I don't know if you've looked at the calendar at all, but it's very good. Is it, it's not perfect, but it's very good. So, and if everything was perfect, then I wouldn't have any money left over.
Okay.
But it's not perfect. So when it's not perfect, there's a cost savings in that wage line item.
So in theory, you're doing your budget for a basic and an EMT, or an EMT and a paramedic. Sometimes you only have two EMTs, therefore you're saving on the paramedic wage.
Exactly.
Something like that.
Yeah, and.
Combined with the occasional open shifts.
And, and so what I do, I actually set up a database that then gives me an average. And so I take my averages and, and pan out for my year. And right now, all my projections show that I'm, I am going to have some extra money in those wage accounts. So if that, if there's no unforeseen fire that really drains those accounts, then potentially at the end of the year, we could just transfer over and you wouldn't have to take it from ambulance receipts. The only Russian roulette that you're playing with that is if we did have a fire, then all of a sudden, it would have to be a town meeting vote in order to transfer anything from ambulance receipts. So I don't know how to prepare for that. I don't know if that's an issue. Maybe accounting or somebody else could help me with that. I don't know. But, but every year, I've, I've always, at the end, I've shuffle boarded everything to cover and I've never gone over my budget.
Ed's got an idea, maybe?
If this is not a recommendation, it might be an idea, and it's just following up on Donna's thought, is later on this evening, you've got the first set of departmental transfers to consider. One of those transfers takes $12,500 out of health insurance. If the finance committee and the select board with the thought process that's gone on, rather than wanting to put an article on town meeting or be worried about waiting till later, there is more than $10,000 that's still eligible from that general health insurance line that can be transferred. Because I was working with Jen on that today. So that would be another possibility. And you can do that departmentally, you know, rather than a town meeting vote. So that, you know, that's up to you two to talk about that or think about that.
So can you, Ed, repeat for me, how much money you think is going to be in ambulance fees?
I said 153.
As, as of today, 153,514 and 84 cents.
And so that's also taken into account the 100 grand from '22's budget and the 68 from '22's budget and the 25,000 from '22's budget?
Yes.
Okay. And what else? And you sent us an email about the receipts was about $65,000 between January.
Yeah, what I asked Jen to do, since they're only posted at the time up through the end of December, to take a look manually at the receipts, the ambulance receipts that have come in between January 1st, and it was last Thursday. And she confirmed that that amount was 65,099 and 86 cents.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. It just doesn't add up, okay?
Okay, so we'll come back around to that probably once we get into more of the budget discussion. But at least we know we've got a couple of options to deal with this particular issue.
Yeah, my job really is just to give the heads up. So whichever way you want to cover that, it's all, I'm, I'm good with that.
All right. And I think the other issue was.
Staffing.
Yours, issue on staffing. Yeah, so you want to talk about that a bit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So it, it really would be appropriate at this point. I mean, we have, you know, 45 members that are per diem and scheduling is, is really a challenge. I mean, it's just, it's a part-time job for everyone. Trying to ensure that there's people there for every shift at the proportions that are most economical is a challenge. And I think that there's enough money within my wage accounts now that we could, that I could pay for a full-time staff person on a basic level. And the only thing that wouldn't be accounted for would be the benefits to that person. And the, the benefits don't come out of my account. So that would be something that you would have to look at in the overall budget. And I'm not sure what that would look like.
Rule of thumb, it'd be multiplied by 22%. Whatever your wages are.
Okay.
The correct benefit would be 20 to 22%.
Okay. And, and, and that's actually.
Just health insurance, correct, you're talking?
I was thinking the health, the FICA, and the 9% to retire.
And does, does the town pay that 9%? Or, I mean, it was a little confusing. I tried to go to treasurer and get a better sense of that. And, and it, and it looked like if somebody had a family plan, I mean, the town could almost be paying $35,000. Yeah. So health insurance is not a cost that I see in my budget, but would certainly be one that the town would, yeah.
Done budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the retirement, I mean, they do an, every year, an actuarial study and it's, they have this huge formula. We have no really way of knowing. We just know that every time our, our aggregate salaries increase every year, then our assessment goes up and we have no, it's this whole formula that they have.
And that's exactly what she said.
So it's going to go up.
Yep, yep. So there's, there will be an effect to that, but it's not an aggregate. So it's hard for, to get specifically what that would look like was the answer that I gotten, which is, I think is what you just said.
It's significant.
Yeah. The salary is one thing. It's the benefits that are really the.
Yeah. I know in the past, I'd written a grant in Belchertown for 1.2 million dollars. And when I was trying to assess what it was for benefits, I just used a 30% and added that on. But looking at it, I mean, because you could hire somebody at $10 an hour and you're still, if they got the family plan, you're still paying $3,600, you know, with all the insurance and everything else. So it's almost, it's expensive to bring somebody in, no matter what you're paying them for their, their salary. The only place where the salary would come in, it'd be like the 9% on the aggregate for the, that you're paying to Hampshire County. But the benefits would be the same no matter, they're going to be paying the same amounts.
Would you consider two part-time people?
The challenge right now is everybody's, I mean, honestly, the challenge is everybody's looking for people right now. It used to be, when I was coming up through, it was hard to get a fire department job. I mean, they were coveted jobs and just very difficult to get. Now, there's not enough paramedics that are in the industry. And so everybody's trying to get all the paramedics that are out there. So their, what they're paying them goes up and all the incentives and everything else. And they're reaching down, like East Hampton is hiring basics now. But they hire basics at more than we're starting our medics. So it becomes a challenge. So as I forecast out for the department, I say, well, how can I utilize personnel most economically? For a medic, it doesn't make sense for me to hire a brand-new medic. Because a brand-new medic doesn't have the experience to work and, and, and work with a basic and it's not the level of service that we need. To hire an experienced medic is probably outside of our price range, honestly. And they're far and few between. So because I have a lot of per diem medics, if I can hire a basic, I may have to pay a little more, but I won't have to pay as much as an experienced medic. And their duties, I mean, some of the duties that the fire department has besides just EMS is fire prevention duties, which is code enforcement, inspections and those kinds of things. And I really need some help with that because there's just propane, there's food trucks, there's a, a litany of work that could be done preventively in fire prevention. So it would be nice to have, and you can't, and that's very difficult to do with part-time staff because there's a fair amount of training that goes into it. There's actually some certification. So if I had a basic full-time, I could split some of the duties out. You know, they have to go to a fire academy, maybe have them go to fire prevention. The other thing they have is like public education, which I, I personally believe that public education is a, is a, is a wonderful tool for fire departments. I know that when they, the safe program first came out in Massachusetts, in the town that I was in, we would have about six house fires a year. Through the public education program, and that was one of my duties, is first full-time in, it, it's like, we had, you know, 10 classes of each grade from kindergarten right through sixth grade. So you're sending almost 1,000 kids home with safety messages, checking smoke detectors, making sure that mom and dad have an exit plan. It, we reduced fires by, you know, by, we reduced fires by half, starting that program. So it's a tremendous program. It's a tremendous program for a fire department to get into schools, have a one-on-one with, with kids, get them thinking safety and awareness, whether it be, you know, home alone, what kind of things that they need to be careful with, candles, how as they get older, they have a responsibility in the household, how to use a microwave carefully. For the young grades, you're really going in, and what does a firefighter look like? Because we sound, shh, Darth Vader, you know? And so we go in there with the gear and, you know, we kind of show them that a firefighter and a, and a police officer are a safety friend. So it, I, I feel passionate about that. I feel as though with a second person in there, you could sort of divide some of those duties. I think that they're a benefit, a direct benefit to the townspeople and the kids of the town. So, so by having some full-time staff, I can, I can task them, those kind of tasks. Per diems, I can't task them. They come whenever it fits into their job, which fits into their family. To ask them to go to a week-long training program, it, it's not always possible for them around their full-time job. So for me, looking at what fits into the department, what fits into the town at the best cost savings, a basic that can do some of these other additional tasks is what would fit in. I can fit it into my budget for the wages, but it, like I say, it would cost an additional to the town for benefits. And, and it's challenging what those benefits are, whether you use the 22%, how you figure out that aggregate on the 9%. I mean, I, I, I'm not an accountant.
What are your estimates on the wages that you're thinking of?
Somewhere between probably 20 and 24. I need to really spend some time to look at.
Per hour?
Yeah. What, what other departments are paying a basic. And I need to make it something that's, I'm going to be able to find somebody. Because if I, if it's too low, they're just going to go to other departments because everybody's looking. And then, you know, with the possibility is they get more tasks, that they could get incentive pay for tasks. So if they, if they completed, you know, like a fire prevention and got accredited from the Mass Fire Academy for a fire prevention, then maybe give them, you know, an increase as they could take on more responsibility.
I'm not opposed to the idea. I'm just opposed to doing it right now. Only because of where we are in the budget process. And I think that, I think it's a great exercise to go through and look at the whole picture. I, I just don't, speaking for myself, don't feel that I, that I know all the moving parts yet on, on how to, to support it. So.
I'd be happy to sit with you. I think, I think, and I think the, I think the challenge really is, you know, as we look at the cost increases that are coming from East Hampton, all of a sudden, as a business person, I hate to pay those costs to East Hampton. I would much rather have to, to keep it in-house, to raise our, you know, if I had, if I can fill that schedule better, I have better revenue.
And I'm all for it. But, but I know, at least from where I sit, the priority is, whether we can do it or not is a different story. Can we adjust the current staff? Can, can we attempt to, to create a path to, and I'm not, I'm the entire town, not just the fire.
Okay.
Sorry. About the non-collective bargaining employees that we're going to bring up later and talk about, you know, because they're here now. And, and last week, there was discussion about, well, if we can't address that, should we bring in new positions? And this is, this is really new costs coming into town.
Yeah.
I, for one, think the ambulance service, we should not be making a profit on it, but we should be losing a very little bit of money.
Yes, we can.
And if we're only bringing in historically $200,000 in receipts, and we consistently have a $70,000 debt payment with interest, right, principal and interest.
Mm-hmm.
Really, it's 130 to work on. Your wage line alone is above that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that it could ever happen where, where, and that's what I'm saying.
Eventually.
So before bringing more full-time people to the entire process, I, I think it's, it's a worthy discussion. I think it deserves the exercise and time to go through it. I just don't know if in the next 10 business days, we, we can get through that whole process. At, at least the win my vote. Still have four other possibilities.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, and I get it. And I wish I had an advocate that I could sit with so that I, I could have you seeing where I, where I'm at. And because I believe that with, with full-time employees and the fact that it doesn't affect my budget, there is a cost to the town. But I think it has the potential to, to round out the fire service in a way that does bring in more revenue. Will it balance the revenue? Not necessarily. But, but the call numbers go up every year. And, and what I want to do is I don't want East Hampton to cover our calls. That's my goal. And if, and if, and if East Hampton doesn't cover our calls, if those come in as revenue for us, that's my goal. Because as a business owner, I want to, I, I want that revenue to be my revenue or our revenue.
Right.
I don't want that, I don't want that, I don't want that revenue to go outside, especially as they're raising costs in East Hampton. So, so I know that there's not a lot of time and I, I wish, honestly, in our last discussion, as I'm doing now, I've probably spoken more than you probably a lot of time for. But this is important. And that's why I did write the email. And I think it's appropriate. I don't know how to make it work. That's, that's a challenging job. I get it. And if I had more, I would more than happy to spend more time with anybody to really go down, to really show you what I'm thinking in regard to that. And I've had my own business and I understand that you need to balance everything out.
If the finance committee, it needs to.
Absolutely.
I think, I think it's a challenge of timing right now, honestly.
It's, and the premise is it's always going to be challenging.
The recurring cost is a challenge too. But, go ahead.
Well, I know that both our emergency departments, police and fire, have gone through an incredibly difficult last couple of years with the pandemic. I also know that every single emergency department, whether it's nursing or police or fire, are dealing with a crisis of staffing. I can't even imagine having 45 per diem people and trying to do a schedule like this and then having to wait another whole year to try to rectify the situation. I just feel like, you know, I'm worried that, you know, if we are going to vote to shift 40, $50,000 over to ARPA, that operating budget in order to give, you know, existing people a raise. I mean, I'm worried about what's going to happen two years from now and how that's all going to get reabsorbed. But I totally support it. I think that we need to get staff, we need police and fire. I want to call 911 and have an ambulance show up my house. I mean, I just feel like we, we just got the letter from East Hampton. They're going to charge $500.
$500 just to come.
If you, if, even if it's, they're canceled before they show up at the house. I mean, we don't have a good solution here. And I, you know, I just, I know that a benefit is, it's going to be tough and it's going to be tough to reabsorb this in a couple of years. But I just.
We could potentially spend more in that cost than we are in.
But that, that increase just happened because we weren't able to satisfy all the calls last year because of staffing issues.
It hasn't happened, it happened in July.
It will happen in July, correct.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, we have the writing on the wall.
So we've got, you know, but we've got a chance to prove that we've got some increased staffing now. We've offered better wages, right?
Okay, but you got to understand, the wages that we're offering, I, I've got a great crew. And, and they're, they're dedicated to Southampton. But we're not paying, even with the increase, we're not paying competitive wages.
Well, I got to push back on that. Because we approved exactly what you gave us.
Absolutely.
You said this is the wages that you need.
That's right.
So if, if it's not competitive enough.
I didn't say that. I said it's not competitive, but I did say that they are dedicated for being in Southampton. Southampton doesn't have the call volume like an AMR in Springfield. So I don't feel as I need to be top-of-the-market competitive. Because they're not going to be working all night long. They're going to do two, three calls and it's hard to get sleep. But two, three calls and you're getting paid for a 14-hour shift. So I, so I purposely asked for less because I ran a business. I'm not trying to maximize just because that's what everybody else is doing. I'm trying to right-size it for what's right for Southampton.
Right. No, and I get the, and I don't want to bring you out the floor, so I don't want to cut in. But we, we gave you the wages that you asked for.
You did.
And your response to us when we asked you the question, is this all you need to cover your shifts and not be open? You said yes.
I said, I, I said that I couldn't guarantee it. I said.
He also mentioned about permanent staffing at that time.
Yeah.
He mentioned about permanent staffing.
I did mention permanent staffing at this time, at that time. And I did say at that time that I, you know, I, that it should help towards that, but I couldn't guarantee. I made a point to say that because there's no way. I don't have the crystal ball. I don't know what.
Permanent staff to cover the ambulance? Because fire prevention has nothing to do with the ambulance.
That's correct. But fire prevention is lacking in, in duties. And so, and I have no one I can train to do that kind of a task.
Okay.
So. So, you know.
Well, I think we have to, you know, we've, we've heard what you've got to say. I think as we get into the budget discussion tonight and talk about the things where we left off at the last meeting to figure out how close we are, we just got some new news about the vocational bill that's coming at us here, and that's, that was an expected, unexpected amount per student that we didn't know we had to factor in. So, I mean, we've got a variety of things to factor in. So I think we have to take this and put it in our pocket and see whether we can deal with some of it or not. I mean, my concern is, even if we were able to do something with a salary, is that ongoing cost of the benefits that I think is going to be hard to control and added to what we.
It's going to be hard to control, but you're also, you're, you're paying it out on the other side. And so I, I, I think it's imperative now, and you got to make your decisions with what you have, and I understand that. But I think it's imperative now because we really, it is a challenge to have 45 people and schedule them for every hour of every day. That's not an easy task. And, and honestly, as we said before, I mean, full-time staff is another way to kind of, to crack this nut. So, because the better we crack that nut, the more revenue that we have. And as John says, it shouldn't be just all revenue-based. We don't ask the police department to pay for themselves or Board of Health or anybody else, but the revenue is part of it. And I think that as a business, as you look at revenue and use a business model, you know, we're losing money if we can't cover. And so, you know, yes, there's some costs, and will it balance out this year? Maybe, maybe not, but it's a tool to get there. So it may not balance out this next year, but the year after that, it very well might. And so we got to attack it at some point, and to kick it down the road, I personally think is a mistake, but I certainly understand that you have challenges to balancing a budget.
Okay. Can I ask you one question?
Certainly.
So the fees that you pay to East Hampton, do you think those would go away entirely?
I would love to think that they would go away entirely. I don't, I, I think that.
With the two people, I guess, with the two full-time?
My goal with the two people would be to cover calls. So, and those are calls that you won't see, because they'll come in as revenue, because I just actually raised rates again. I think that was part of my email. I had gone and raised rates, and it's, it hasn't been that long since I've done it. But everybody's been raising rates, and I saw that it was an opportunity for us to do the same. So my goal with that is to really cover every call. The challenge that I have is if it's still two basics, I don't want to limit those basics and say, don't call paramedic, because ultimately, what I have to answer to is patient care. And no matter what my budget looks like, how much you want to come down to me for not being, you know, we're spending money to East Hampton, patient care. I want to be able to take care of somebody with a paramedic if we don't have it. And so there may be, there's more than likely still going to be some costs, especially if I go at this by hiring basics. But my goal is to cover our calls.
I just ask because if you look at whatever the last expense report, you spent about $12,000 so far this year, so, in ambulance.
Okay.
You mean for intercept?
Yeah.
Well, that was at the previous rate. I mean, did.
Yeah, that's at the old rate. The rate is going to go up.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Like, you already spent 12, so even if you spent another three, or say you spent two, you have 10 grand that you saved that you wouldn't expend out of the ambulance fees, that you could use for something.
Yeah, so even if you spent that, that same money, as you referred to, it's, 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 it's the money that you don't see. It's when they come in, they take a call, and they bill.
They bill out and they get that money.
Twenty, you know, $2,000 on the call, and, and we don't even see it. It doesn't cost us anything, but it's to the point where he was frustrated and said, and said, you need to do this, because if I've got to pick it up, you're going to pay.
Yeah, I mean, and the 500 is like double what it used to be.
Yeah, yeah, it was 270, 250 for a long time. They went to 275, and now they're going to 500.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that burns me up. I, I, I hate the thought of giving that to somebody else. And I just think that, that the, the two full-time staff is imperative now so that we are picking up those calls. And I think that it balances out with what we get in with revenue, more than you think, but it's only a projection. I can't, I can't, I, I, I don't have a crystal ball for that, so I can't give you solid answers.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, John, for explaining that more.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the time.
We'll see how it comes out in our discussions tonight. We've got lots of things to talk about.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, folks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, guys, I think we're at a point where we need to take a look at what Bradley and Ed and I guess Jen have been involved in in terms of the.
Yes, all three of us.
The wage adjustment discussion and how that impacts the budget, et cetera. So you've given us a whole bunch of handouts, so tell us where you'd like us to start.
You tell me.
Well. I'd like you to explain how you get from the column where you proposed rate. If you could just explain that, that was, that would be helpful.
I can't read.
The proposed FY '23 rate. How did you arrive at that?
That was the original, just taking what they are currently making in '22 and adding 2% to it.
Okay.
So what we did was, we looked at it, and the first time we looked at it, made some assumptions and said, okay, the pay, the pay ranges from the minimum to the maximum, and I'll say the most, what is the newest study that was done is X amount of dollars. And we put that through and I, we ran three different assumptions on it because we have nothing that says, here's, here's the range, but it never said, here's step one, step two, step three. So you couldn't see how long it actually went out. So made three assumptions, which you'll see down below for each of these grades. Assumption number one was, okay, what if these steps were 2% apart? That comes out approximately at a 24-year life cycle. Next step was 3% apart, and that comes out at approximately an 18-year life cycle. And then the last one was, okay, let's assume that these steps are 4% apart. That comes out at a 12% life cycle. So there's assumption number one.
12 years.
You know, where, where do we want it to fall? So that was number one. Our, I'll say, my first attempt that Bradley helped me work out kind of failed a little bit because what we did was we just kind of said, okay, where are these, if we take the years of service for a 24-year life cycle, 18-year or 12-year life cycle, where might they, where might that percentage fall in that 24, 18, or 12? And my methodology failed a little bit because I assumed incorrectly that the benchmark would fall at 50%. Well, it didn't. It kind of fell at 45%. So that threw it off in some of the cases. So took that same information and said, okay, for a roughly, an approximately 24-year life cycle, 18 and 12, if we take a look at this and actually take and plot out what a 2% increase would be each year, a 3% and a 4%, and then we will take a look at that of those three cycles and say, all right, if someone has one year of experience, or five years, or 10 years of experience, where would they actually fall on those steps? And that's basically what we ended up coming up with and putting into the grade column. So what you see here, Bradley broke them down instead of that big chart, which is sheet number one, grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, and grade six from that study that was done in 2016, 2017. And you will see the three different approaches of, okay, if this was a 24-year, an 18-year, or a 12-year life cycle to get from the min to the max, how that would play out. And just for an example, in each one of these grades, we'll do this, and you, you will start to see little instances where the market has played into this, and it's, and it's off, where because of the market, we may be actually currently paying someone above what the minimum of this would come out, and vice versa. You may see some people being paid at above what the maximum might be. So if you slide over to the right, Bradley, on grade one sheet, so what you'll see is those, the first 24, 18, and 12 where it says compared to years was that first attempt that we did that my methodology failed by doing it as a percentage of where they would fall as in comparison to the max. The next three columns nested at based on years of service, you'll see the 24-year life cycle, 18-year, and the 12. So in the case of that first COA van driver, if you were looking at that, want to go back, please, Bradley? Thank you. If you were looking at that COA van driver in that first row, who is, let's say, currently making $15.30 on a 24-year life cycle to get through the steps, it would fall at 15.55. If you use the 18-year life cycle, is that was our, our ideal, and what we'd like to use, it would be $15.86, and on a 12-year, it's shorter, so it's $16.17. And.
So somebody wouldn't make $15.55 till year 24?
No.
Oh, okay.
Year three, and then year four, they would go up a step, which is that.
Correct.
I guess I'm confused as to why you use 24-year cycle. I'm not quite sure what that means.
There is a range that goes along with the study, X amount of dollars to Y amount of dollars. If you say the steps are 2% apart, it's going to take 24 years to get from the min to the max.
Gotcha.
Okay, and the 18-year is on 3%. And this is very basic assumption because this does.
So this is the years you picked, 2%, 3%, 4%, and then said, those percentages, how long will it take?
How long it'll take. And, and it's, it's a very simple assumption because I did not get into the fact that, okay, the steps might be 2%, 3%, or 4%. What might be the recommended length, and it usually doesn't go for the entire 24 steps, 18 steps, or 12 steps, what might be the cola on top of that, and how does that play into it? This is just basically done looking at a simplified step classification.
You haven't factored in the increase that you would put into place for the minimum benchmark and maximum that you would have to adjust every year?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just awkward.
All, all this is, is kind of saying, here's three different ways to look at this. Does it make sense to anybody of any of these three ways? Or, or does one of the ways make more sense than something else? Or, or, or we can't get all there in one year, so let's break off half of it, or, you know, 2/3 of it, or whatever. But it's probably a more mathematical methodology of looking at what the range we were originally given from that study and brought up with the 2% over those years as to, okay, if you go by years of service in that same, in that position, where might that person actually fall for fiscal year '23?
Yeah, just, could you clarify the definition of what do you mean by years of service? Is it years of service in the town or years of service in the position?
Years of service in the position. There's actually two columns up there. One is years of service in the position, and one is years of service to the town. But the theory being that you would move into that classification and might be step one or, or whatever if you, if you were already here, and start from that point going forward.
So if you started as a clerk and you did three years, you'd be on three step in a perfect world. And then you took a promotion, in theory.
You should just move the step three up to that next level.
You'd be starting as probably step one again and moving up again.
So when you have column three here, Ed, so there's 15.55, 86, and 16, that's, that column or that number three is reflective of a three-year, somebody in the job for three years, is that right? That position, somebody being in that position for three years?
It would technically, you'd look at it as probably in two years.
Two years.
Because someone with, shall we say, zero experience would come in at the minimum step one. So after one year, theoretically, they would go to step two. After another year, step three, and so forth.
So the, maybe you're, I don't want to spoil your thunder if you're going to get to this point. But so you took, you, the task you guys took back from us was, we, we know everybody that's here. We know what their hire dates are, right? There can be discussion of whether it's service date with the town or service date in the job. But, and then we know Francine's numbers that she extrapolated, creating the mid, the max, and the, and the medium, and that. So just applying to two, really, the work here is to 2, 3, and 4%, right? Was that what it was, 2, 3, 4?
Those are by assumption, our assumptions as what, what is, what is the percentage difference in between the steps? And, and again, that, that.
You pick the number.
Yeah, I mean, it could have been, should have been two and a half, three and a half, four and a half, but that's what we picked.
The, the spread from either 13 to 24.
Correct.
Because you're working within those little parameters. So.
Yep.
Do you have, if we went with option one, which is the two, I'll say is the 2%, do you have what that impact is to us, or the next one, or the next one? Do we have three cumulative numbers?
I would have to calculate, we would have to calculate that out for the individuals.
Well, let's, let's go down and hear more, more of the explanation, but unless you have a question?
I just want to say, so that when you have the column O, it says 15.30 to 16, what percent is that?
What's that?
What percent is it for the proposed FY '22 rate? So you didn't do it by percentage?
FY '23.
It says FY '23 rate, $16, $16, FY '22 rate, 15.30. What percent increase is that?
Can you clarify that, please, Bradley?
I need to move my cheaters. I can't read that. Just need to move me.
The impact for those drivers, though, would be pretty minimal if they still are getting paid on the FRTA grant. It wouldn't impact the general fund budget, I guess is what I'm saying.
That particular position.
Yeah.
Isn't that John's column, his proposed?
Should be, should, should be 70 cents divided by $15.30 should give you the percentage increase. That one I can actually do in my head.
But is that the actual, like, what, what you're proposing is to go to that particular rate? Or is this just?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
That's like a 4% rate, from 15.30 to 16?
That, that column O, proposed FY '23 rate, that's the number that I printed.
Yes, yes.
Column O has nothing to do with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking to see what, what's being proposed here.
He's on P, which is the impact to the budget. So as Vicki pointed out, the two van drivers wouldn't have an impact to the budget. But if we follow this, because they get hit out of the grant, but if we follow that.
I just wanted to understand the method, so that, so that there's a, there is a system that we can all either get behind or not. I just want to make sure that there's.
Well, the system is this. You've got a range that's here.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
Is it 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 30 years?
Right.
What is that person's years of service in that position, and where does that fall? Because on that chart, because that will tell you if you accept that and say, we like the 24-year model, this makes sense, that person should fall at step eight. What's that dollar amount?
Right. What's the, the, 24 seems like a long time to me.
It does. It does.
I mean, I'm kind of leaning more toward the 18 myself in terms of realistic, in terms of the number of years somebody would spend in a town position. But I'm just, 12 seems kind of short, but 24 seems way out there to me. So I, I'm kind of the middle of the rotor here. In terms of the 18 makes some sense to me in terms of people, because we do have some people that have been around in quite a, quite a long time, I think.
I didn't reverse engineer this by any means. I kind, I picked 2% because I actually thought the starting point at 2% would come out right about 20. It came out at about 24. And there's, there's actually some variations between. And there's actually some variations between what the percentage spread is from the min to the max depending on the grade levels we found. So like I say, you could easily, as easily take it and say, okay, that first chart that's up there, and let's, you know, make it two and a half percent, and, you know, the next one, we're going to leave at three, and maybe the next one at four or three and a half. You can play with them that way. And like I say, you'll find some imperfections here of people that are currently making over where they might fall with this methodology, you know, currently, or, you know, under in some cases too, but...
This methodology just continues through grade two, three, four, five, and six.
Yes.
As a reminder, the grades here represent the grades on the updated...
Study. Right. And that, those are the ones that we color-coded last time.
Right. And...
So maybe look at another grade.
Basically, it's based on the assumption that that study nailed it on the head and that also in the, let's say, five years hence, that, you know, market conditions haven't done anything strange to where any of these fall. I mean, my original, my original thought when I looked at it, it seemed pretty good and accurate. I mean, to the point of 85% or 90% of it. My original thought was just looking at how some of the positions were grouped together that instead of, and I'm not saying, I'm not going to say where they're grouped together, but that six grades probably should have at least been eight and probably nine. But that, like I say, that's my take on it. So like I say, you'll find, you'll find some outliers. But before we actually got into the actual calculations of what is this impact, I was hoping to get to a point of, okay, well, you know, we like the 24-year 2% methodology, the, you know, the 18-year 3%, you know, spread in between. 12 is, you know, a little bit short, but again, it really depends on what, because usually the way these are set up is you will have, and it's going to be shorter than 20 years, is, okay, you'll have a grade and you'll have a step, but you're going to say, in these positions, in general, you'll climb to that benchmark faster than you will get from the benchmark to the maximum. And that's why you'll see, okay, maybe it's not, you know, 24 steps, or 18 steps, or 12. Maybe it's eight steps, you know, maybe it's six steps, maybe it's nine steps, because usually you will take that step. If the individual gets a positive evaluation, they get the step, and then you'll do the cola on top of it. So instead of seeing a 2% increase, you might see a 2 on a 2, which is going to come out close to, you know, close to a 4 or what have you. Went on to three, if you were doing a three or two, you'd be close to, you know, to a five. So, and at some point, the colas would continue, but the steps usually would have fallen off.
Right. So this is grade two, so that would be all those in column Q. That's all the green ones there that were column Q.
Correct.
That's this grouping of people.
Yep.
So let me understand, down at the bottom left there, you've got under 13, you've got something in gold and a couple, so what does that mean?
I was just saying, once they reach the benchmark, that was the year that they're going to reach it.
Okay, that's the benchmark number. Okay, so in that first scenario, it would take them 13 years to get to the benchmark, is that right?
Correct.
And then nine years, and then seven years. Okay, thanks. I was trying to figure out where that was. Okay. All right.
Can you just scroll over to the right a little bit? Thank you. So... So, I'm sorry.
No, just looking at how long, on average, people stay in positions by age range.
Oh, by age range. Something you look at.
Francine.
Interesting. Oh, yeah, yeah. Median tenure for workers ages 25 to 34 is 2.8 years.
The current salary 2022, that's changed, though. That changed back to January 1 because of the minimum wage, so they're at 14.25.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, okay, so that benchmark, the proposed benchmark in W, that is from the study, yes, or no?
That is from the study.
That's from the study.
Yeah, those three columns that are kind of in that...
BWX.
Purply, blue, the proposed salary minimum 2023, proposed benchmark 2023, and the proposed salary maximum 2023 are all from that study.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so you're hitting that at different points depending on the longevity of the cycle?
Correct.
Right, so for example, the substitute librarian under this with three years of experience is anywhere between 16.34 and 16.99, depending which one of the three options.
Right. Okay. I think I followed that. Any thoughts, questions, comments? I mean, let's talk about this, interesting...
First, I'd like to...
I suppose you've gone through here.
Thank you. You took all the pieces, spread together, and you created a format. I mean, whether, whether this is the ultimate one to go with, it's very nicely done.
I think you weren't hoping to have to do steps, right?
What's that?
Were you planning on having to do all these steps, though?
No, actually, it was actually probably late on Thursday afternoon when we got to, I think, grade three or four, and I could see that the methodology that we were originally using on, okay, this person should be 34% to the maximum or 55% to the maximum, was starting to fall off the curve. So actually, I knocked my head against the wall a little bit over the weekend trying to figure out some other mathematical solution other than what we ended up doing. And what we ended up doing is mathematically calculating out the step scales and then using that to bring the numbers over. But I was kind of hoping that it would be a little more mathematically, you know, easier, but...
Yeah. No, it's a lot of work you guys did, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But it'll give you some ideas of, okay, you know, maybe this one or that one is, you know, in the ballpark, it's going to show you in some cases that probably the difference between what a, someone falls at a proposed fiscal year '23 with a 2% might be close to what it falls in the pay scale. And sometimes it, I mean, I will tell you, and I'm not going to mention any positions or names, that there's a couple that stick out, and I will even say this, a couple that stick out as being, falling under these if you use this methodology, or adjusted last year, or had an extra adjustment last year, so...
Yeah, well, that's, we use the same scale, so that would make sense.
Does anybody fall above it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's some that are in grade, that are, whatever your top is in grade six, people are actually over that now?
It won't be just grade...
Or any grade.
Six. I can go, I can go back to, I forget if it's three or four.
I just think it's something that's like a five-year employee is actually being compensated as if there were seven under that scale.
Yeah. I mean, this is an easy one because I won't be picking on anyone other than myself. Bradley, would you go to grade six, please? And if you go to the left, so we can see the town administrator's position. I have four years of service currently. I'd be going into my fifth. Now, if you go to the right, basically, if you looked at, if you looked at what might, instead of a salary, an hourly rate with a 2%, it would come out, the true amount would come out to $40.82. If you look at where the three charts would fall, I'd be below that. And that's, you'll notice that's the case in some of those other positions that are in grade six also.
Yeah. So have you gone so far as to propose a rate for each of the positions?
Oh, I mean, I will, number one, I'm going to preface this on the fact that I believe, at least in some of the positions, even the minimum is still low. So I'm going to, first of all, I would say that, okay, if you adopt any of these and you see that someone is currently making more than what that scale might fall at, I would probably suggest you don't freeze them. But other than that, I'd probably take a look at the 18-year scale and where those fall. And like I say, the methodology's there theoretically if you said, here's the range, and other than, minimum might be too low, so it might need to be shifted to the right, but, and saying, okay, if someone has six years of service and is going into their seventh year, if we're really looking to get there, this is where they should be. And the question then becomes, okay, Bradley and I can do the calculations and tell you if that is more than or less than 50,000 or whatever in the worst-case scenario we did a week ago, and come back with that and can say, okay, if this is the model we want to follow, can we still get there? Or if it's above what that original estimate was, do we, do we, even though you're the voting bodies, say, okay, maybe we can't afford it all in one year, we try to get to half or three-quarters or whatever. But like I say, it's not totally perfect, but I think it gives you a better idea of really where people should fall.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know if finance has any thoughts or comments?
Yes, please, go ahead. Sorry. I'm staring at the numbers.
Are you on the spot?
I mean, it's a lot to absorb. I think I mentioned this last time. I think it's great that we kind of want to move this forward and, you know, everyone's worked, put a lot of work into it, but we're at the 11th hour, and we're trying to slam this in at the 11th hour. And I just hesitate because I think you could probably look at it a little bit closer and make sure that it's more accurate, because you don't want to do it and then do it again later and have to revise it. So that's my...
Well, in all theory, we will be doing it again later because the board and the PBB have authorized us to use ARPA funds to redo the classification and compensation plan. But then you have the question of, okay, do you penalize people to wait another year to get there?
Till the study's done?
I guess I just thought that we were coming here tonight to try to balance the budget, the additional shortfall because of the vocational and what we had looked at two weeks ago when we met as far as giving additional, you know, proposed additional raises and or hours, you know, adjusting those salaries. So we met last night to try to brainstorm and think about ways that we could come up with that, say, 70,000 that we thought we were kind of off because of, and now, I don't know, I just, you know, like, it is, it's a lot to absorb, it's a lot to try to change, and then if we have to wait for this to get calculated out and what's the real impact going to be, and then we have to meet again and try and figure out how we're going to pay for it and...
But with the, with the, I mean, I think part of the problem we had a couple meetings ago was we had some estimated wage adjustments, but we weren't all on the same path in terms of how we were getting there, right? So I'm wondering if we, say, we took the 18-whatever-year schedule and took a look at whatever was proposed, the 50,000 and whatever we were trying to adjust, was that the right amount, something like that? And see where they fall on this and see if it makes some sense, then we don't have to do a lot of, I think we're just trying to be sure that we're grounding ourselves in something to make those adjustments, but go ahead, John.
Well, I think that in a little simpler form, this would be, this would be very easily translated to the constituents, you know, if we cleaned it up, cleaned it up.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm thinking, and I don't know, if you want this as a motion, I'll make it as a motion. But if not, I mean, I would suggest that we focus in, on the 18-year step scale, and we ask, based on that, go, have the, have the internal finance team go back, look at the current staff that's there based on years of service in the current position, as they already defined that they did. What's the impact to the general fund budget, right? Because, you know, the COA piece is going to be out of the grant fund, and we still need to know what that number is, but what would be the impact to the general fund? And then Ed just mentioned it. Depending on what, in my mind, if that number comes back equal or less to what that number we already had, then more than likely, I'm good with it, just me. If it blows it away or doubles it, then we have a problem, and then I have to side with the same argument I just gave the fire chief, this is the last minute and we should hold off. But with the understanding, we're using the existing study, modified study as we know it, or updated study, and we've already approved, and hopefully it would be done in the first or second quarter of next year, the Dunninghugh Center, I'm assuming, or the Collins Institute, coming in and saying, okay, here's our scales, here's our marks, is this still the correct for the market? And then in essence, we have the 18. My only caveat, I would say, is identify those that are over their mark, and then for this purpose, they should be frozen per se until we get that second study, or at least know what that number is. Have a second spot, a sub-number on what that is.
Yeah, I have a, I have a suggestion, and I look at this as net zero. You have basically the dollar amount that we came up with at the last meeting, which was somewhere around 50,000, I forget exactly where it was, and we worked hard to get there. So here's my model theory. Whatever we come back with on the 18-year doesn't exceed that. And if it does exceed that, you take a look at what the percentage is and say, okay, we can only move three-quarters of the way through to get there because that's a dollar limit. That isolates vocational tuition increases $60,000 and puts it back in play of how to cover that.
So before you had the vocational increase, you had to find 53, about 1,000 bucks to whatever the numbers were before for the wait, for the wages, for the increase in the hours and whatnot. So now you have to find another $50,000 because of the vocational increase. So you're at 100 grand that you would potentially move to ARPA to cover that and this.
I've got...
True, but we have, we have potential solutions for that vocational.
We've got to get to the vocational in discussion and get there. I think we've got some ideas.
And I've got, it's not ideal, but I have one quick idea that would actually just about cover that, and that's basically over the last two years, we haven't put that ambulance debt into the ambulance, the annual town meeting budget and budgeted it at the special. We could take that out, which is $69,000, and do the same thing again for fiscal year '23.
So put it in later on? Okay, I've got two questions, Francine?
No.
No? Okay, Rainey?
I just have a question of the finance committee. Because you only pay the debt, not the money in the budget.
I think it's January, February.
May I ask a question of the finance committee? When you were just talking about the figures and the deficit, were you assuming, I mean, is there a 2% increase colas for all employees? And, or were you incorporating in the $48,000 from the last meeting when you were talking about where the budget stands currently? Were you counting the wage increase that was proposed last meeting?
Yeah, I think we were, not that we, yeah, I think we were taking that original $53,000 and just using that as a basis for trying to determine, do we think these things should be in ARPA, should they not be in ARPA? Like, you know, what is our thought process behind it? And then, so I guess we were considering that piece. Again, I'm all for giving people increases. I'm not quite sure about giving them more hours, like, doing them combined together. You might want to do one and then postpone the other and that, so that might draw that number a little bit less. But yeah, we were looking at like $100,000, I think, yesterday.
Well, I thought, I thought that at the last time we all met, that we had the, what Ed had proposed as ways to come up with the money. But we were looking at, okay, now that our free cash is certified, what could... But we were looking at, okay, now that our free cash is certified, what could we possibly take out of free cash? We actually did talk about the ambulance debt and saying, well, let's take that, let's wait further into next year and take that out of the ambulance receipts, because historically, more came out of ambulance receipts than just the $100,000. It was $100,000 to cover the wages or ambulance costs and then the debt. So not knowing what the ambulance receipts were to date and what was really going to be in there that we could legally vote at town meeting, if there's not enough by the town meeting date, then we could wait and do that at a special in the fall. The other thing that, you know, we, why we wanted to see the statement of indebtedness today was that we talked about if there was some debt that we could, free cash really should be used for like one-time purchases or something that's not, we're not comfortable using it for, to balance the budget and just saying. So if there was debt service that was one or two years from being paid off, even for this year and then proposing that next year we did the same, we took that, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 from free cash articles to pay those specific line items on the debt service, which would then free up that money. So that, that was what we had discussed last night.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So just back on this chart, it sounds like people are pretty much, Francine and Joy I haven't heard, but pretty much toward the 18-year mark out of the, these lifelines here, rather than 24 or 12 or not?
I, somehow I envisioned when I did it, something like 15, because I looked at the first step, put three steps in between, then, that would account for four, then the midpoint would then be the fifth step, and then three more steps in between or four, so that we ended up with, you know, equal number of steps in between each of those ranges.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I mean, I didn't play it out, because we hadn't really discussed how we were going to get there.
Right.
So, you know, trying it within varying the number of years and see how long it takes is fine. We just all have to agree on what that is.
Yeah. Okay. Any thoughts?
I think the 18 makes sense going with that.
All right. So at this point in time, what, what makes our most sense? We want to, we know that we've got roughly that $50,000 from last time that we had kind of isolated. So then, if I'm hearing correctly, we've got some ideas that we still want to deal with from the budget and from what might transfer to ARPA. We want to go through that again? And then...
And then, and I'm sure the finance committee knows this, and it sounds like they've already been thinking about it, is if we stick to the policy for the distribution of free cash, 35, 30, and 10%, it still leaves 25% of free cash on the table, which will disappear basically three weeks after the annual town meeting. So the three, the three different paths that I can think of are, okay, you let it just, John brought it up today, let it disappear, it will come back November, December, you know, December. You can actually say, instead of those minimums of the 35, 30, and 10%, you can put more of a percentage into either one of them. Or you can say, okay, do we want to do, shall we say, more one-time projects like capital projects or whatever? Or utilize that, those funds to do something like pay down debt that you might have a year or, you know, two left on, which makes, makes some sense to me. That dollar amount is $84,510.50 that would be sitting in that 25% amount, just so, you know, you're all aware of that, whether, like I said, you wanted to just let it disappear or if you wanted to use that towards some of the, you know, debt or, you know, some other pieces, so.
$84,000?
Speaking of free cash, I think there's some pieces that we're missing. For instance, Ian submits reimbursements for E-9/11, training and support grants, and I, I looked through the expense reports, and those dollars were not taken out of the general fund, applied towards the grant when we got the money, which in essence would give us more free cash.
Oh. Yeah, that should be all grant, grant-funded, right? This was the 9/11 one?
The E-9/11, yes. So I don't see on the expense reports for '21 that that was actually taken out of general fund and put towards the grant, which would give you $30-some-odd thousand more dollars in free cash. So...
Which, which could be, which could be recognized by doing that entry now and then filing amended.
You could file amended, yeah. I just, when I was looking at it, I just noticed that it hadn't, the journal entry hadn't been done.
So that would be what, kind of a journal entry or something like that you'd have to do?
Yeah, you would take the expenditures from the general fund and...
Transfer them to the grant.
Transfer them to the grant, correct.
Okay. And then you'd have to go back to the state to get a recertification or amended certification of free cash?
This isn't a ton of money, but...
Everybody helps?
$30,000.
Yeah, but the other, no, but the other piece was, I don't, normally when, when the town would do, send the pages to the FRTA, there's an indirect cost piece, well, none of that revenue got booked back to the general fund.
Is it what piece?
The indirect cost piece for people's time.
Right.
That piece never got charged back to the general fund, which would in essence be, it's not a lot of money, it's probably $3,000, but that would fall into free cash also.
Right.
And the water meters were incorrectly done also. So normally, you have revenue, a collection of $8 per bill, per quarter, that gets dumped into the revenues, and they really should go to fund balance reserve for meter fees and not to the undesignated fund balance, because those are designated specifically for...
Meter reading.
Meter reading, you know, so they, they're putting money in there so that when they have to replace the meters, they have money to do that. So, yes.
What about the indirect for the enterprise funds? Is that getting posted?
Those got posted, correct.
You haven't committed any of the cannabis money, too? That's going to end up in free cash, right? Or is that held separately? Is that dealt with separately?
That goes into the general fund, just for general distribution.
Yeah, well, this year, that will go into free cash, whatever you've collected.
Yeah. So there's, there's money that has, we haven't expended any of that. In the document we got today that has the outstanding debt, it doesn't say when it's retiring, right? Is that...
No, you kind of have to, you have to kind of extrapolate it by taking the amount retired the year before.
Right.
Like, it looks like the ambulance has two years left.
Yeah.
23 and 24, I think.
And I'm thinking 23 is the last payment on the ambulance.
What Jen sent us was '21, so '22's been done, we paid that, so that's year 1.
Oh, that's '21, yeah.
It's one more year.
136.
Yeah.
And then just...
I believe it was five years.
So just to recap...
And another source on the ambulance is there is the cap, the stabilize, the ambulance capitalization fund, which is $90...
Some odd $1,000, yeah.
$1,000, I think Bradley sent that to us, or I can forward it when I ask. But the intent of that was $25,000, as I understand, $25,000 a year, got put into that plus the earnings and interest, so that when it comes time to buy a new ambulance, there's not such an impact there. Perhaps we leave it the way it is, status quo, but I, in my mind, thinking about everything that's been talked tonight, if come the fall meeting, if we move the debt for the current ambulance service out, and for some reason ambulance receipts are short, we still have that pot of money to go to as a backup or a failsafe to make the last debt payment.
Even if we transferred it later in the year when there were funds or something, but at least we...
And you could do part and part. You could do 30 grand from the stabilization and 30 from receipts reserve if you, you know, depending on how much is in that ambulance fees account.
Okay. Yep. And so, but just to recap the things you said, so the three things there are, are journal entries that would need to be, need to be adjusted, is that correct? Do you guys agree with that?
We can work on that.
Look on that?
Sure.
Because if that can free up a little bit more free cash, that would be maybe good for us.
I mean, $34,000 is kind of a lot of money.
Yeah. But on the, but on the, on the E-9/11, though, right?
Yeah, that, that's about, I think you sent me like 34.
I think it's about 35, I mean, 30.
$35,000, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So that's one task to be followed up on then. Okay.
One more thing. So when you do the free cash calculation, there's, they reduced it by grants that were in deficit spend, and I guess I would check with Jen to see if those grant monies came in before September 30th, because if they did, and you can show that they came in before September 30th, the state won't deduct those from your free cash.
We kept them till September 30th, and we couldn't find the money yet.
They didn't, the money hadn't come in, so they, oh, that's strange. But I just wanted to throw that out there, too, because that would be money that you wouldn't necessarily have to deduct, so.
It usually doesn't, usually it does come in by the end of September, you know, anything that's, if it's spent by June 30th.
Yeah, usually you get it. That's why I just, it's like, just double-check.
Okay.
Anyway. Trying to find some more money.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay. So let's, shall we go through the budget as we know it at this point in time, in terms of our, our revenue amounts and all this stuff? We're clear on, John?
Could I just make one, take one stab and see if it goes anywhere?
Yeah.
So just back on the wage thing, so it sounds like, at least for the exercise purpose, that the board somewhat agreeable with the 18-year. So to give direction to the team, I would make a motion that we use the 18-year step scale, apply it to the current staff, and cap the cost at no more than $50,000. So if it comes in below that, great. If it comes in at $51,000, then that equal, that $1,000 difference has to be equally made up amongst everybody, so we have a permanent number to work towards forward, and it gives them direction to go through. I'm happy to have it come back to the board to look and see what that looks like, but again, trying to avoid being here on Memorial Day.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know what everyone thinks.
Okay. So that was a motion? Can we have a second on that?
I just want to say, I don't see how that's, I think that's working backwards into it. I mean, what we're going to say is that we're going to commit $50,000 to raises, and who would get them? What would it be? I mean, I just, I mean, is, I don't understand what the method would be, I guess.
Using, using the method that Ed just presented from the internal finance team on the 18-step scale, taking people in their current positions and saying, okay, you're a one-year, you're a five-year, you're a 10-year, where does that put you on the scale using the mid-max plot? And maybe for you, it's a 20 cent an hour adjustment, maybe for you, it's an 80 cents adjustment.
I understand the process, what I'm asking is if it ends up being $70,000 and we're committing 50, how does that get reconciled?
The $20,000 difference proportionally gets, everybody gets a reduction by that amount, so we only use the 50,000 before.
We'd only use 50,000, no matter what.
Right. And then next year, we'd have to make up that, if we stay on this course, in theory, we'd be committing to do it over a two-year period instead of one year.
Right. So basically...
If you had people that were frozen because they were past that step, then you probably wouldn't use some of that 50.
Correct.
Right. I mean, you're, you're basically trying to adjust as many people, if not all people, kind of all at once, one time.
But if we have to, if we don't have enough money...
Right.
Then everybody only gets to move up the same percentage.
I don't think you should penalize someone who was hired at a higher rate than they probably should have been. Are we saying that they would at least get a 2% cost of living, or no? You'd freeze them entirely?
I haven't gone through the whole thing, but the ones that I saw that would be frozen already have employment agreements, that their adjustments are already being...
That would not be true.
So how long would it take to actually get these numbers, Ed?
The ones in grade six.
What's that, John? Well, the grade six folks all have employment agreements.
Okay.
Correct?
Well, or, or planned.
Yeah.
Ed, how long would it take to actually get the firm numbers of this system with the, with the process you proposed?
Probably could do it for Friday.
So by the next meeting?
What grade is the system in, Ken?
I mean, I think that was the idea, to say that we thought we had...
Mr. Lumbra, would you look at grade three, please?
I am.
Okay.
So which one? Line one or line two?
Oh, great. She's still, what, line one?
The first one listed, yes.
It's the first one listed.
Right, was hired, was recently hired in less than a year above what the thing says, so they would stay at where they are. And then next year, we're going to have the Collins or the Dunninghugh Institute say, either your skill's right or it's not, and then there'd be another revenue or line of adjustment. But I also said originally, if you are, if people are frozen, who are they? So we could see what that impact would be.
What would the impact be?
Okay.
Yeah. So is it doable to take the 18 and then apply the number of years of service and figure out if we're within that $50,000, or is that...
Is it reasonable or is it doable? I will say it's doable.
Well, okay, it's doable, but, okay, so you had mentioned Friday, so is it reasonable by Friday? Can we...
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, at least to give us an idea, because if we can do a good adjustment now, that would be ideal, right? Knowing that that's just one piece of an adjustment, and every year, we're going to have to do some level of adjustment. I mean, it's just, but to begin and do as many as we possibly can, hopefully all, by some level of percentage based on that $50,000. We're putting aside $50,000 toward increases, and however that gets divvied out...
Definitely a step in the right direction, whether we get all the way there or part of it is way there.
It's a chunk of money.
Yeah. I think it's a significant step, at least, you know, and it lays out a plan, and it helps people kind of envision where they're going as a result of this effort, and puts it out there.
Right. So you just freeze them, you don't give them anything else.
All right. Well, I think I have a motion on the floor, but I don't have a second.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Yep. So the motion was to...
Use the 18-step scale as presented, then do a calculation of the current staff and what the impact to the general fund would be.
You're supposed to use the little icons to say, save to reject.
And to cap that impact at nowhere near $50,000, and then report back.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further thoughts and discussion on that? Yeah? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I don't know if we sent you...
Uh, no.
So if you want to...
Oh, John sent it to us.
Oh, did he?
Yes, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So votes four to one. So Ed will, will charge you and Bradley and Elise to work on this for the next, for the next meeting?
Yes, will do.
And let's see what it looks like. I mean, see what we can do. Okay? All right. So with that in mind, let's go back to the actual budget and see where we are now. We had a few things that we had to rectify with the, well, things that we had agreed on at one point to pull off to ARPA. Now, I don't know if some of those got talked about at finance, and maybe you're changing your thoughts about some of those, or we want to take a look at the increased impact of this new vocational fee of $943 per kid that we didn't know about at the last minute, right?
I would recommend, since the past practice for the past two years has been not to budget for the ambulance debt service and do that at a special town meeting, then in this particular case, we do the same thing with the, with the hopes that there's enough ambulance receipts to cover it, put the full $100,000 into ambulance wages and expenses. So that's a $68,000 plus interest, whatever that comes out to be, deduction to the budget, which covers the $60,700 impact that Desi just sprung on us. And then, again, knowing that, the hope is ambulance receipts will get there to cover it, but if they don't, we have a fallback to the capital ambulance stabilization fund if we don't ultimately use other funds for it. And then that's all, that solves that issue.
That issue by itself?
Plus, if there's really $153,000 in ambulance receipts right now, and we're only going to take the 100 at town meeting, like, that's, then there's almost enough to take, you know, there probably will be by June 30th, because May and June aren't recorded yet.
Right.
But then you also have to be sure you leave money in there to pay for the intercepts and all that for the rest of the year, if we have any, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mean do it just if there's barely enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just mean, that, there should be enough, you know?
Is the first plan though, to do a line item transfer?
And also any intercept fees to East Hampton or Westfield.
Is that Plan One, is transfer within the department?
At the end of the year?
Yeah.
Oh, for the, for the extra $10,000?
Um, I mean, it seems like it would make more sense. It doesn't have to even be within the department. If there was, we can do it at the end of the year.
In July.
It just means it's, it's basically less free cash when you're covering a deficit from one line to another, you know? So, why take it out of ambulance receipts and move it when we can take it somewhere else at the end of the year, just to, to avoid the deficit?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it, it seems too, that, you know, I mean, we've been meeting once a month and can meet more, well, more than once a month the last six weeks or so, but I wish we knew in advance before lines were overspent.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if, if it's gonna create a deficit, especially, it's, it's one thing if it's a $500 deficit, but if it's a $10,000 deficit, then I feel like, shouldn't be, the bill shouldn't be allowed to be paid until we know how we're gonna pay it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. That's how our system is, yeah. Okay. All right, so I, um, John, you made, were you, did that was actually a motion? Was that a motion?
Well, if everyone's in favor of it, I mean...
I mean, just to, to hold off on the, on the ambulance step.
Right, which solves the, I mean, it really resets us back to where we were last week.
Right, let's, let's just take a look at that, so that, what we're talking about, just so that everybody's clear, we're talking about the vocational tuition line, is that the one?
They usually give it to us with an estimate anyway, because they don't have that.
So we, we were already at the...
$60,602.
But the state didn't, hadn't set the new rates yet.
No, but we were already at the $1,200, right? Or no?
No, we were 1159746. The adjusted number is 1220348.
Okay, so that's, okay, that is the new adjusted number, I'm sorry. I was reading the comment, saying it might be low, so I wasn't sure. Okay, and that was for, how many students? How many did we figure in there for that adjustment? Because weren't you saying that you didn't always budget the exact number of students, right?
Is it $938 per student?
I believe it was, I'd have to go back and look, I think it was 62.
62 kids?
I've, I've, 62 students.
You know, when they have to make their final election, like, of if they're gonna go? Because I know a lot of kids, like, they apply, and then...
Yeah.
They have up until September.
Yeah, until, until they go.
Ah.
Yeah, and then we often...
It was interesting, uh, it's a bump, bumper crop of at least applications this year. There was, on the tentative list, there are 17 that are coming in, and there were less than that, and I can't remember the exact number, of seniors moving out, so.
And last year's class, the freshman year, this year is huge.
Well, and usually we get, usually we get one or two stragglers too, you know, after the deadline, we, it's like, there's a last minute, we need to send our student there.
Few kids that have been going back and forth.
So, yeah. Okay, so this is factoring in this new increase by Desi of the vocational tuition, this is already in there.
Yeah, that was the only change that was made, too.
Okay, so what is the bottom line impact in terms of our, where are we with our budgeting here? Oh. So our revenue projections are still the $19,077?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And we're $8,000 in the positive?
No.
No, negative.
Negative 58.
Oh, I'm seeing eight, it was gonna be, okay.
Yeah, it does look like a dollar sign, doesn't it?
I was gonna say, yeah, okay. 58, I was gonna say, wow, how'd you get there?
The interest.
Right, so if we move the ambulance debt of 68 plus the interest, and I just can't remember what that number is.
Yeah.
That puts us in the positive by 10.
Can you go up and see what that is?
Go to debt, please.
The ambulance debt, just to see what that...
Oh, it's listed on her statement of indebtedness. I know.
So, we've got, uh, there it is, that ambulance, 68064. And then the interest is, scroll down, please.
85080.
Yeah, that's good. So about 689.
Out of the 58, so that puts us to a positive $10,000.
So if those were pulled out, just...
And are you still talking about free cash on those?
What's that?
What we, what, what source is gonna be actually paying those off?
No, we're taking, taking those out of the budget.
Oh, the receipt, oh, okay.
And then we will, they will, we'll add them back in, at a special town meeting, much like we have the last two years.
Oh, okay.
And use ambulance receipt funds as the primary source to pay it.
Correct.
Yeah. So if those...
And that's what we have done the last two years also.
But, but it's possible that we could use some free cash for maybe other debt service payments instead of ARPA.
Right.
Right.
So that we're not, like, relying on ARPA for all these things.
Exactly.
Um, I do have a question on the East Street Bridge. That hasn't gone out, or, it's on the statement of indebtedness.
It's, it's in the process. So, it'll be before the Select Board this month.
Okay, so it hasn't gone out for permanent financing, that's why...
Because there's interest payment, but there's no principal.
Yeah, there's no principal payment into next year's budget, so how are we gonna pay that?
It, Jen had checked with Unibank, and it would just be an interest payment that would fall in '23.
Okay.
Okay. So with those two out of there, then we are at a positive number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There you go.
And that's positive in parentheses? Why?
Just the way they did it.
That includes, that includes the, the, the finance team increases, it includes the $50,000 wage increases. It includes everything we've talked about so far?
No.
No, the wages are not included in this.
They're not in here?
No.
Okay.
We still have to call up the...
Okay. But the 40, but the 50,000 has already been taken out and assumed to go transferred to ARPA or something, so we're, we're basing this on revenue that's already been, I mean, expenses that have already been shifted, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we had talked about, so this was the one sheet we have on the ARPA, maybe...
So on the, on the one-page ARPA?
Right.
Right? That has the 48.
48,000.
It's showing $5,500 to ballistic vest.
Which we can now, well, I can't say we can, if, if the Finance Committee and the Select Board approves the transfers later on this evening, we could take that right off of there.
Yeah, I think, didn't Ian tell us we could take that out anymore? That was gonna be covered? Or that's covered by your transfers, is that's why?
By the transfers.
Yeah, okay. All right, gotcha.
And then the thought of adding, having the transfers up before us now eliminates one or possible three articles from the town meeting.
Yes, if Robert made, made us break it into three different articles, that's just three different transfers.
Right.
So at least saving one and possibly three articles at the ATM.
Okay.
So, I don't know, Chris, if you wanna pause and, you know, consideration for the town moderator's time at the annual town meeting, we could take this up and eliminate one or three articles.
Sounds like an interesting idea. I'm sure Robert would...
Because then we could, if we agree to it, we could adjust...
We could make adjustments as we go.
The 5,500 as we go.
Yeah, because then if we didn't have to move something over to ARPA, if we did it through a transfer, then we could see what our real cash was like. Okay, why don't we take up then, there's so many pieces of paper in front of us tonight, let's take up the proposed budget transfers for fiscal '22.
Number one.
Number one is the independent audit, correct?
So that's what it looks like.
And the amount, we have an amount budgeted, I believe it's like 215.
Whatever it's all about.
Uh, it looks like we needed another 145, and this is seemingly found through certification stipends, retirement contributory, and group health insurance.
Correct.
Then police building expenses of 2,000, that's coming from, I'm assuming the police communications expense account?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the police overtime account of 4,000 is coming from the police wage account, and police expenses of 3,000 from the wage account. Okay, so, that all looks interesting, but what happened to the ballistic vests?
Um...
Where'd they go?
I think that's the...
Do they only need $3,000 for the vests?
3,000.
Is it the last line there? Is that the police expenses?
That's D.
No, I'm sorry, that's the police expenses.
How are you gonna pay for the vest if you need 5,500?
That's the police expenses?
That, um, I have, I have a surplus in police wages as a result of leaves of absence.
Okay.
So as a result of the surplus, if I can get, um, those wages, and I also have previously transferred money into police expenses as well. So how I have it figured out is, with these transfers, I could pay for 10 vests for, for the officers that need them, at least for the, the, if we're speaking specifically to the police expenses. So I'll have, I'll have that in there.
Mm-hmm.
And what I'm also adjusted for, and should negotiations be complete before the end of the fiscal year, I'll be able to pay all retro with, with what we have, with this budget. That's how I have everything planned out.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure, since it only looked like we were transferring 3,000 expenses, that that, that you have enough then?
So in my, so currently, right now, we should be at, I think, what, 15.4% expended. I'm 20, I've only expended in my wages, I've only expended, um, I have 22.28% left, so that leaves 6.8, and so it's about $44,000 extra. So that other $30, $30,000 will hopefully go towards retro on top of the, what I get back from reimbursements for dispatch retro. So, should everything be done by the end of this fiscal year, all that should be paid for by, by, with this budget. And that is all because of, a full-time officer wasn't hired until February, so I had that as a surplus, and then an officer will use all 86 shifts of family medical leave by the end of this fiscal year. He started in July, he'll use it by June 30th, and that leaves about $25,000. So, between the two, it's about $50,000 extra.
Okay.
And as far, and if we go through with this and you get the 10 vests, any vests that need to be purchased next year, if they should be needed, the existing budget that you have up for consideration would cover that cost?
Hopefully, when we get the reimbursements, it's 50% reimbursement, it can go into an account, that'll leave some money left for, you know, for instance, five vests, right? These are 10,000, it's $1,000 per vest.
Yeah.
So if I put $10,000 directly into this, I reimburse, if that 5,000, $5,000 gets reimbursed, and we can put it in a specific account for vests, then all future vests can be paid for out of that.
Mm-hmm.
That works for you folks. That's how I planned it.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve these transfers, line on transfers, the total of $23,500.
Procedurally, can we, can we vote on it prior to finance?
I don't know.
Makes sense?
I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter?
So if we vote for it and you vote against it, does it pass?
No.
Nope. They both have to, we both have to say yes.
Second?
All right, all right, well, we'll take our vote then. All those in favor on the Select Board side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Make a motion to approve the transfers as listed.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thanks, Ian. All right.
So we can take that 5,500 off the ARPA list, right?
Yep.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so, ARPA, that one goes away, okay. We can zero that now.
I've seen my name so many times, I don't...
All right. Um, okay, so then going through the, the ARPA list, just to review what we had said before, this is kinda where we had left things, I think, last time. So we had done some shifting around here, um...
But I just had a couple of que, I don't remember the logic. I mean, I know what the, the outcome was to get to a number, and we did, but, can you just, somebody refresh me on lines five and six? Those are the only two wage items in there, wage-related, right? Everything else is tangible.
Right.
You know, whether it's reoccurring or not, it's a different story, but...
Right, that, that was the proposal, to go to 40 hours for, for the treasurer-collector.
Okay, and then the principal assessor, because the budget, the budget, I think that's in there right now, is currently holding that position at 60,000.
Correct, for a 40-hour work.
No, we, we did, we did not specify at the PQB that it was for a 40-hour week.
And that wasn't the intention of the assessors.
Right.
How many hours were they talking about?
Well, it was, it was, it was more of a salary position.
More of a salary position.
Okay.
And so, we, I...
The intention of the, that the assessors, when they sat with us, was they, they felt they needed to make this 60,000, potentially salary position, not necessarily 40 hours a week, in order to attract a person, a candidate, willing to come here...
That has some of the...
That has some of the qualifications and experience. Because, you know, I think their belief is that, and I, and I don't disagree with them, is that if someone's gonna come here for 40 hours, they're gonna want more than 60,000.
Right, yeah.
Because assistants are making...
Making more than 60.
Yeah.
Granted, it's a smaller community and stuff, but some of the workload is still all the same. You know, you're still, and, Southampton has a lot of chapter land. You know what I mean? So that's, takes a lot of time.
So for $800, you know, like, I don't, I personally don't feel that we should take that off of that line. Like, I think it, I think it should be set at 60. I mean, I...
Yep, I would agree.
Especially since the position's not even filled yet, like, why, you know, they just came to us and we approved it, now we're already gonna cut it, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
For $800, I don't know that I see the value in making that small shift.
Okay. So, then, on the, on the treasurer's, that was the, that was the cumulative impact of taking the treasurer-collector's position from 31 to 40 hours with the off...
To 36. To 36.
To 30, sorry, if I read it, to 36 hours, and adjusting the admin clerk from 30 hours down to 19.
Correct.
The, the, the net number's the 10,126. Or 128.
Yeah. So if we restore the 805, with the vests coming off, I mean, do we, where do, where do we stand now on this, these figures?
So if the assessor's still back at 60, rather than 60 minus the 805, is that right?
So I have a theoretical question for the select board.
Okay.
60,000 for 20 hours, 32 hours, 40 hours, which is going to be the deciding factor when you adjust the wage scale?
Yeah. But, and I, I hear that, Ed, but I'm looking at, maybe I don't have the latest, but I believe what is the latest budget from Bradley, and that is line item 25, and it, and it's budgeted for the full 60,000. So I, I don't think we need the 805, I mean, it's, we can have the hour discussion, but I think that the full 60,000's in the budget already.
Theoretically, they want to hire somebody that doesn't have any experience. Where does that fall for step one on that pay scale?
No, I, I get that, that, that's the second part. The first part is, though, the 805 that we're, that we have over in the ARPA, I don't think we need the 805. Now, are we going to stay at the 60 is a different story, and then, if it's at 60, how many hours does that represent as continuation?
Well, we're currently at 31 hours there, right? The current position.
Based on, based on the budget, it's a 40 hours.
Right, it's right there in the note.
It's an exempt position, so it's full-time. Because it will matter when you do the calculation based on the schedule that we put together of hourly rates and how people move.
But just because the $60,000 is in there, doesn't mean you're necessarily going to pay someone that 60 grand. If they come in and they have, and you put it in a range, and someone has two years' experience, maybe you don't pay them the 60, but you have to have it in there if someone comes in with five years of experience and you want them to do that job.
I mean, I guess the same argument could be made, I mean, I've been a proponent of making the two elected positions appointed, you know, for, for treasurer-collector and town clerk, but they're salaried and they're elected, we have no control over them. So you say that it's 36 hours, but you really can't enforce that because it's a salaried, elected position.
Right.
So, you know, there's, I'm just saying that that's...
Yeah.
Could you go back, rather to the other...
You can still get paid whatever you get paid.
The ARPA...
And, and so if you were to, you know, you look at this reduction piece, and, you know, you have the treasurer-collector wages, and you want to reduce the admin position to that 19 hours, how is that going to help that office if they're still behind?
Well, Jen addressed that, she felt like the behind part was her part, and that with the increased hours in the office, the front of the office is being attended to with less number of hours needed.
Yeah, she came and spoke to us about that.
And I know she proposed that last year, and it didn't go very well.
Well, that was, that was at the last possible, that was like...
Say, what's different this year?
Well, I think last year, it was a proposal based on not real experience. It was like, oh, someone left, we, we got to, let's rearrange it, and so I don't think she had experience, a time study, or anything to back it up. Now she's had somebody in the office for less number of hours, the work's getting done, with the exception of her piece, so now she has experience of knowing what the work is and who can do it.
Where the backlogs are, I think, yeah.
But...
So why, why would we want to take that out of ARPA, though? Is that what we had said to do? We'd put a wage thing in ARPA, I guess I don't remember that part, but I guess we did.
So I also just want to clarify, previously, earlier this meeting, the board approved a PCF for that office, to hire somebody at 30 hours per week, in a temporary position.
But why do you need the 30 hours if it's her part that's behind and she's willing to reduce this now? Why do you need 30 hours now?
Yeah, great question.
That's why I, we didn't sign, or we didn't sign the PCF, because it, it's kind of in flux, you know? If you need the 30 hours now, then what's the difference, I guess? There's a, there's a disconnect. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Don't know, that's what...
There's a disconnect there.
Good point. Did we miss that?
So, all right, so I, I guess my, this all started because I just wanted to clarify, so I understand where the number's coming from, and we can have a different discussion on that, but I think the other thing that I'd want to be clear about is, is there, isn't there, are there or are there not, any existing positions within the proposed budget that right now has the savings of $10,000, that is increasing the base number of hours? So employee X was doing 20 hours in this budget, and next year it's going to 30 or 35, whatever, the, the number, are, are there any of those in there, or is, was the original, and I don't remember, was the original just the 2% based on their hours in 2022?
Well, there was a change in the COA, the admin assistant...
That one I remember, and that went through PPP, so I remember that.
And then the other, the other one that I'm aware of would have been the library position that was voted on earlier tonight. I don't recall any other, there maybe have been positions in the tab 2 wishlist for extra hours, but I don't recall, recall any that would be in the tab 1 with additional hours.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of, okay.
So we have 41,000 that we're talking about taking, was all of this from ARPA, or just the bottom part?
Just the bottom part. The top part was possible reductions, yeah.
All right, sorry, I'm reading it wrong, okay. So there was 16,000 at the top, and then 25,000 possibly from ARPA, okay.
Well, why didn't you just say that to start, Ed? The top is reductions to the existing budget, and ARPA's down upon, that makes perfect sense now.
Yeah, we're getting there, all right.
Bradley just showed me the header up on top, and I'm good now.
There we go. Okay, and so that's working within that, that target that we had established last time, yeah, okay. All right, any other comments about what was here for, we talked about the maps last time, and I think the radar signs, what did we decide about the reverse 911? Are we going to try and leave it there, or?
So, so this goes into my second thought process here, is, is what's on here that really isn't, or traditionally hasn't been a reoccurring expense?
Well, open space is new.
Yeah, but, but like the reverse 911, are we really not going to fund that? You know what I mean?
No.
So when it comes up for the renewal?
It's going to be an ongoing...
And I would say, if, if, if there is that, that room over on the other side of, of that $10,000, I can see that one moving back, and then, I mean, the assessor-town maps comes up every so many years?
Yeah.
Every year.
Every year.
Oh, it's annual?
Every year.
Yeah, so maybe those, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. And the ILPEB thing is every year, because we budget for it every year?
Well, same for the Sharps and Mosquito, but I mean, they all are.
So is there any room, you know, with COA, with some of their grant funding, to potentially pay for some of the Sharps programs? Because a lot of seniors use that program, you know, does it fund, is it, can it fall into any of those categories of funding that they have?
No, I mean, their whole budget is funded by grants, I mean, we should be paying more out of the operating budget for the COA compared to other departments, and I think that's not entirely true. I think that, that's a fund that belongs in the Board of Health.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I believe that a lot of those grants are tied to program.
I was just asking if, you know, there was, you know, certain things, you know, like...
There were other, I mean, again, I can only speak for HOIL, COA out of HOIL gets a grant to fully pay for the Sharps. It doesn't, the Board of Health administers it, but it's, it's 100% funded by the US Department of Public Health. And I, and, and my guess is that probably isn't a burden that should go to the COA to figure out, but perhaps the health director or the Board of Health could look at it.
The Board of Health could look for a grant.
And if it's just a matter of, hey, if you submit the application...
Yeah, we can administer it, right?
Right, so if there's...
Or have Board of Health look to fund it through a grant?
Yeah, if there's grant money available, then...
And then Mosquito program, for that matter, too.
They should look at that idea then, too, yeah, that's a point. The, did we leave in 500 for the open space in the budget, and, because they'd asked for 1,000, right? And we took out, we said we were only going to do five, right?
Well, yeah, we were going to do five, 1,000 was in the tab 2 wishlist, so this would have taken out the five.
So we have, so the five is, it's sitting there right now?
Still there?
It's in the budget, right?
Yeah, these, these are all potentially, we haven't taken any of these out yet.
So all of them are still in the budget? You're just suggesting that these are lines that could move?
Possibility.
So where does the operating budget stand right now, with those things still being in there?
At a negative $58,000. And that, and that's a negative 58? Huh? Oh, that's right, Bradley, Bradley made that exchange, so it's 10.
We have a positive 10,000.
It's 10, and that's without the, any additional wages, wages increases, correct.
So we're minus 10, without even the wage thing?
No, we're positive 10.
No, positive 10, so...
Why that's in parentheses, it makes it look like it's negative, but it's not, it's a positive 10.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, get parentheses or something around that.
Since we already voted the 50,000 thing, so we're basically 40,000 negative to the budget.
Right.
Yeah, and so by what we've pulled out, we're down to like 41...
Right, and then, and then, as, you know, the finance committee had brought up, if we, the boards were willing to take a look at what's left on some of those debt schedules of, you know, one or two years, and maybe do some of those from, from the free cash that would be the wash.
What's left that gets retired in the next year or two? What's...
I think there was a police vehicle, maybe, or a fire truck, something?
Well, I think that, yeah, I think there's the two administrative vehicles on there that this, I can't remember if this is the last year or the next to last year, but I know those are getting close. I know the ambulance has, this is fiscal year 23 is the last payment on that, I'd have to go back and take a look at the actual dates of retirement.
Well, you can kind of tell by what was retired.
Might be, well, never mind, that was a debt exclusion, I was going to say the Nora School repairs might have only one year left on it, but that was a debt exclusion, so...
Okay. So right now, to get to that bottom line of 10 positive, that's because we still have all these things on the reductions and alternative funding still in that budget.
Yeah, so we're looking for 40,000, something that we can pay off in free cash.
Right.
I know we already did some of this, you know, there was some money left from computers that were allocated from capital back in 2019, and I think the report says $5,000, but there was 7,500 or 7,900, whatever it was, for the, for the server, which I think in conversations, my understanding is that we're going to do that through a grant and a whole other big, you know, IT project. So you could, if you weren't going to use that for the server, at town meeting, vote to reappropriate those funds to pay for the rest of those computers in that technology equipment line. You just have to, you would just have to vote at town meeting to, to change the designation of, you know, what the funds were used for. We did that with Water a couple of years ago, they had appropriated $175,000 for a new well, and the new well never came to fruition, so we went to town meeting and changed the, you know, reasoning why they wanted that money, and you'd have to, it's kind of like reappropriating it, and you could do that, because it's already there, it's not taking any new money, you just reappropriate it to pay for the rest of those technology equipment that you might need.
You're saying there's about $12,000 there?
Well, I think they already, I think he already, Ed already reduced the 11.5 to 8,300.
Correct.
Yep. But there's that extra, I don't say extra, but that money from the server, which you could just then put an article on town meeting warrant to reappropriate it to another source, and it could come and pay for some of that equipment. Just a thought.
Otherwise, it would...
It goes back to capital.
Capital, yeah.
If it's not going to be used, which is...
So those things don't have to be voted again, like if you, you don't have to vote to put it back in capital, or same thing with...
If it's unused, yeah.
If it's unused, same thing with CPC, right? If something gets approved and they don't end up using it, it just goes back, right?
Yeah, the only thing you look for is actually a, a release letter to cover the, the accountant making the entry.
The other pot of money that's out there is, there is money that's been on the ledger for a little while, probably. Special revenue fund, it is sale of real estate, I think there's like 1,100 bucks in there, but we just posted new money for sale of real estate, which is like $4,200, that can be appropriated at town meeting as a funding source for the general fund budget.
Might want to check on that, the last I knew, MGL's limited the use of those funds to purchase of other land?
Let's apply it to Palmer Meadow, then.
Go to Palmer Meadow debt.
Well, Palmer Meadow debt's being paid by CPA funds anyway.
Well, it's being borrowed, is that the one that's being borrowed against CC?
Yeah, future CPA revenues, yeah, the 400 and some odd thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they might have changed that, MGL, over the past couple of years, but it was done, you know, five or six years ago.
What was the other sale of real estate? The first one was...
Sale of real estate?
First one was the farm, that was 10, I think, what was the other one? And you said there's another one, too?
Oh, there was something, there's been money on the books, it's been, just been a balance there from, you know, 10 years ago, that just kind of, because it's not really, it's like 1,100, it's not really enough to quote-unquote "do anything" with, so to speak, but if you add another 4,200, you got like $5,000 that can fund something.
Yeah.
But we'll have to check into that, it was just a, just a thought.
What about using the, the free cash to make the East Street Bridge interest payment? I mean, that's $32,000.
But that, if that's a debt exclusion, then that will get put on both sides of the equation.
Yeah, all right.
Maybe we should use the cannabis funds to pay for the Sharps program.
We do have like the police vehicle, which was 19,000, that's inside the, according to the statement of indebtedness.
Not according to the budget, though.
No, but the debt payment's 19, but according to this, it's...
I mean, the balance is owed is 56, I'm not saying we're paying it off, I'm just saying covering the debt service at least for this year.
What's the, what's the amount for this year?
19,000.
19,000.
Right, but if I, if I look on our budget worksheet, that cruiser is in the exempt debt section, which is where the East Street interest...
Well, it says departmental equipment police, what is that, then? There's two things under departmental equipment police, one's for 56,000 and one's for 37,000, and they're both inside the debt limit on the statement of indebtedness.
We've only got the cruiser there for the police, right?
And then there was the building remodel for 55,000.
Where, where does it say the total amount, like, to pay off?
That's on the statement of indebtedness, it's not on that.
Okay. But how do you know what the term is, is it based on what you're looking at? You said you can tell...
I'm just looking at what the balance is in 21.
Okay, all right.
Balance and payment.
Yeah.
Okay, that, yeah, the sheet had the balance, okay.
Okay, guys, let's make some decisions here, where are we going with this? We're getting late.
That building remodel.
What are we trying to do?
Well, I thought we were trying to get to some level of...
We're trying to get to $40,000, and we're trying to use a payoff something from free cash in order to be able to free up and balance the budget.
And ideally, we want something that's a one-time expense?
Yeah, that's what I, I think so.
I keep mentioning the cannabis funds, but I think that the Board of Health and maybe the police should come up with a education plan, or some, you know, like come up with something, I think we, we should commit to do some education in the schools, or the school department should do something. But I also thought that maybe that would be a good use of paying the Sharps program.
Does, does the, I don't know how time it would work out, and this would be a question for the highway superintendent, is there any cost savings if we were to utilize X amount of free cash, and he was to pre-order his road salt? Is the price cheaper right now than waiting till the fall? And we did a bulk, a bulk purchase of 40,000, I, I don't even know how much he spends a year on it.
And then, and the other piece of that, do we have the area to store that amount?
All good questions.
Salt, yes.
Pick it off top, man.
There are no, there are no bad, there are no bad questions, John.
No, I'm just trying to think, something that we're going to use anyways, and if we could pre-buy, you know, even if it's a 5% discount, I don't know, I would think road salt's not in high demand right at the moment.
But don't we have a contract with...
Be surprised, because everyone knows the prices are going up.
Do we have a contract with a collective on that? We're not going to be able to, can we, can we even prepay?
I don't think he buys it off the state contract, I believe he buys it through our FERC cooperative.
But they have their own contracts.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get creative.
What's the charge on the, that current debt that's around $40,000?
There is.
That's a one-time? A vehicle, maybe?
Well, the thing is, you have to look at what we have budgeted for paydowns in '23, and nothing, like, a lot of it's new debt issued in '21, so it's not going to be paid off in '23. But, I mean, maybe we can pay...
So the, I guess the question with the cruiser and all that, is that really exempt debt?
It's not. The only exempt debt on here are the Larrabee renovation, I think we have one highway truck that's on here.
Right.
Nora School upgrades.
Nora School upgrades. Nora school upgrades, yeah. And the East Street, well, yeah, the East Street Bridge will be. I don't think there's.
So what about the $47,000 for the, the truck? I mean, those two years right there put 94,000, so it looks like there'll only be one more payment due. Assuming that note is correct.
Highway truck is 100, so we're at 47, this one right here.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so it was 100.
140.
140. So are we paying 47 this year in fiscal '22?
It's budgeted.
It's budgeted for that.
Okay.
And then 47.
Yeah, so if we pay that, maybe that with the interest for '23, and we commit to doing that same thing out of free cash next, for the next year, for, if our free cash is certified and we can pay it off early, we'll save that much, you know, a little bit of interest for the following year. We'll just pay it all off next year before the notes due. That makes sense.
Yep. And the other one, so the, the police cruiser is a, and not a, not a new debt, is that an older? That's still on there for 19? 19.5, 12, and 19 going down, so.
It was new in '21.
Was it '21? Okay. So we don't know what that amount is, okay.
So, I mean, that could get paid off, too, but if we're just going to pick one, then that's, that might be enough, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be about right.
I will check on that one.
Yeah, okay.
And if for some reason that doesn't work, if there's anything on that debt schedule that Jennifer says will work.
Right.
Okay. All right. So any further thoughts that we have to figure out here? Where are we going here with this?
But just second argument, that 47,000 works. If it does, right? Then there's enough, there's enough surplus to cover what we're trying to do with the wages later on, and we don't have to move anything with ARPA.
Correct.
You're at about 57,000, right? If that works, yeah. And you leave all that stuff there without doing much with ARPA at all?
I don't want to jinx it, but it seems too easy.
Yeah.
We're forgetting something.
You probably are.
Well, that's, that's because finance came up with mo, most of it, so.
Well, that's good. That's what we're here for.
It was a productive meeting last night, I tell you.
Well, great, no, that's, that's what we need. That's great. No, I mean, I mean, the less that we have to move around to ARPA, I think is, you know, I mean, doing a, you know, a request, an ARPA application for $500 is just not.
Not only that, for, you know, something that should be in the budget.
Yeah, things that are going to be there every year anyway. I mean, from the maps to the mosquito control, it's going to be with us no matter what, so why shove it off just to.
Yeah.
If we don't have to.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Are we kind of okay at the moment with this? Do we know where we're going with it?
Unless we get the numbers at the end of the week on what these.
Yeah, see what the budget impact, the wage adjustment impact might be and see if we can manage it.
One more meeting should do it.
Yeah. Does that sound right, guys? And we'll have it for our meeting on Tuesday and see what it, what it comes out to be. But it looks like we're, we've come up with a couple of creative moves here that will allow us to get somewhere, which is great. All right. Anything else on the finance side here? I don't know, are we, do we need to go through these warrant articles? I think you were just putting out some drafts so people could see what they were looking like right now.
Yes, one, one of the members asked if they could see some drafts of the actual wording, so.
Yes, I think that was maybe one of me also.
So that's actually, most of the ones that I.
Yeah.
Had that people had either sent me in a Word form that I could cut, paste, and edit versus having to retype or whatever, so.
Yeah, don't forget to add the free cash one.
Yeah.
Free cash one?
Is that in here?
We just talked about.
Yeah.
There'll have to be another one for free cash.
Free cash, yeah.
I'm not.
Another, another article for free cash? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, to pay, if we're going to be shifting money off of the effort, don't we have to have an article to, for the town to vote to approve?
All we, all we would do under other funding sources on the revenue side is add that from free cash.
Really?
So you have to vote on it.
You have to vote on it.
You have to vote out of anything that comes out. So you can either vote on it as a separate article or you can vote on it to reduce the tax rate, even though you know it's specifically going for one purpose. It's not just willy-nilly throwing the money out.
I, yeah, I would rather have it say what we're paying.
Paying, of course.
Just because, just because we've kind of set up.
It's clearer.
A policy of saying it's not, we're not going to just use it willy-nilly to reduce the, the tax rate.
Yeah, no, I think it would be helpful to know exactly what it's going for, yeah.
Right.
I agree with that.
Okay.
All right. So maybe we'll have reduced one or two articles by the time we're done here, but we've still got quite a few on the list.
Can I ask a question? Joy, actually, do you, has the housing group been in contact with the seller of the land? Is there any, I mean, we're waiting for, now that we pushed town meeting ahead, is that a consideration or a problem at all? The, the CPC funds for the purchase of the land?
I'm not sure. We're meeting next Monday, so we'll address it.
I know, I know that a letter was drafted. I'm not sure if they sent it out or are waiting for the next meeting, so if they can all approve it or not.
We might be waiting for the next meeting.
All right.
Can I ask another question? Thank you for sending the revolving fund limits that are part of the articles for reconsideration. Was there more information we were going to get in terms of the increase? Are there any guidance on this or is it totally whatever the voters want to approve?
It's supposed to be a reasonable amount of what they expect to spend, and I will tell you at least for the forestry one, and I'm doing this one by my memory, and Vicky might have the information in front of her, but the, the conservation forestry has a cap of $10,000. The balance in that budget right, right now, because they did do some forestry work, is $19,000.
Wow.
So if we didn't increase it to 20, technically at the end of this fiscal year, that balance that's over 10 should be transferred into the general fund.
Only if that's how you voted the original revolving fund, which is how the weights and measures is voted in. If there's anything left, that reverts back to the general fund, but it has to be voted that way.
The intention of setting this up, when the voters were told this, that the forestry management plan would be to improve trails. So that should probably be spent, frankly.
Yes. Yeah, but you can't spend it all if you don't increase that limit.
Right.
You've got to increase the limit tomorrow.
Yeah.
Increase the spending limit. It's not the collection, it's the spending.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
If, yeah, if you don't have to turn it back over to the general fund.
So that one would be.
The limit to 10.
So that's going from 10 to 20, that's the request on that one. And the other one was the fire burn permits from 5 to 20. We should ask John when he was here.
And I can remember that John's rationale on that one would be by increasing it, that would allow them to use that revolving fund to purchase, whether it's an ATV or whatever, for like a brush truck to do brush, brush firework, so.
That was the intention. But here it's at 5,000. So you might, I think we are, you're talking about increasing that from 5 to.
He's asking, yeah, 5 to 20.
It's listed here as 5, that's what I was just thinking.
Yeah, that's one of the articles.
Yeah.
Do we, do you know the balance?
I think he mentioned it.
I don't remember, I don't remember hearing it offhand.
Yeah, I should remember this.
Don't remember.
The only number I remember is that he collects about $6,700 a year.
Yeah.
Well, as of this, oh, that was '21. Let me look at this one.
Right. Yeah, I don't know. Offhand. Okay.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a huge amount. It was, it was over, I think, pretty sure it was over 500.
It's like 10.8 right now, but no budget's been posted revision, so I don't know if he's collected any. And it's not posted to the, um.
Right. But we did just finish a burn season, so.
True.
Cash my check.
So we can also get rid of the one that's the second ambulance receipts shortfall of 4,000, right?
Yeah. Did we talk about doing that at the?
Because we would use existing funds in the budget.
Departmental transfer of some type before the end of the year, right?
And number 51 is really going to just be 100,000, right?
What's that?
We're still showing number 51 is 200,000 ambulance receipts.
Ambulance receipts, transfer.
On the, I'm on the agenda.
Transfer of ambulance receipts, 200,000 for operations, and it should be 100,000, right? Is that right for the warrant article? We took off the treasure collector appointed as well because of the deadline, right?
So the, the treasure collector demand fee, do we know what the current rate is?
15.
Yeah.
15. So unless MGL is changed.
Go to 30.
By statute, the treasurer, the collector or treasure collector can waive all fees up to $15.
Correct.
As soon as you go above it, nothing you can get waived, period.
That's correct.
I know in South Hadley, the select board set the demand fee at 30. Let me tell you, we get, I mean, you got somebody with a $5 excise bill, they get whacked with a $30 demand. And, yeah.
$5 excise bill.
Who, how did this make it on? Is, is the collector asking us to do this, or?
Yes, and it would, it would become, shall we say, consistent with a demand fee for that's current for the water fees.
So could we word the question that at the request of the collector, we're going to $25? Just to be clear, I mean, it is an elective post.
Well, she, she's the one that's going to have to say, no, I'm sorry, I can't waive it.
But, yeah, but this way it's not, hey, the select board did it, it's not me.
Oh, technically, it would be the town meeting that did it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. Is there anything else that we want to discuss on here? We do have a, hopefully a short executive session tonight.
I would just make sure that these community preservation monies are fairly accurate to make sure there's enough, you know, reserves for those based on what you've collected from previous years, so.
Will do.
That was something, when I did the recap last year, the DOR just said make sure they know that they need to, make sure those appropriations are equal to that total, so.
Yeah.
And if it's less, great, but it's only an estimate anyway. It's better to be over than be short.
True.
So before we adjourn, do we need, do you expect us to be here next Tuesday? Is that, I mean, would you, or what's, what's the plan?
Well, we should be, let's see, Tuesday's the 10th. We need to be right at our budget finalization, one would hope. I don't know. I mean, I think we've gotten a lot of good input from you guys. I don't know if there's anything.
Well, we just have to meet to vote on the town meeting articles prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not going to be able to be at the town meeting.
We have to vote on that.
Yeah, the final budget at some point, so, I don't know. What do we think? We need to come next week on Tuesday?
I mean, they will have to vote on any monetary article, which includes, includes the operating budget.
Yeah.
You know, can they do that at a meeting their own? Yes.
And all that depends on budget meetings I have in Westfield, so.
Yeah.
What's our deadline?
Let's, let's say we don't.
What's our deadline on the warrant articles?
Assume that you'll have to have another meeting yourselves.
I mean, I'd like to wrap it up, so at least we, I can type it up at the next, you know, at the next meeting, yeah.
Thank you for all your deliberations and input and creative ideas. I think that's helped us move a couple, a couple of things forward and maybe make it a little bit easier to figure this out, so.
Yes.
All right. If you all would like to adjourn?
Yes.
Go for it.
I think they just did.
They just did, all right. Thanks for coming. Okay. I think on our end, are we, pretty much, I think we're done with what we were going to talk about. We will be going into executive session shortly. And the reasons, let's see. Oh, first of all, just to remind everybody, we do have the town election on May 17th. Don't forget that. That's still out there. And on May 21st, there is the spring into Southampton that's kind of starting again. There's various things happening at the park and at the church and at the library, book sale, plant sale, tag sale, all sorts of things going on, so put yourselves on the calendar for the weekend of the 21st for some activities in Southampton, anyway. Getting back to some little normal, normal seat, and then the Memorial Day Parade is a, following up a few days after that, but. So, executive board, let's see, executive session. We will be going into executive session for the following reasons. MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, police union. MGL, Section 30A, 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, highway superintendent. And finally, MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. This is the approval of the executive session minutes of January 25th, 2022. So with that, could I have a motion to go close this meeting and go to executive session?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Umbra, aye.
Road nine.
Falls aye. Okay, we are adjourned at about 9:08, and we will be back in a few minutes.